Up and running?
Yeah.
I have the call this meeting with the Rockport Select Board to order for Monday, November fourteenth. The first item is I'd ask everyone to please turn off or mute your cell phones, and if you have to take a call, please step all the way outside. We have no public hearing this evening. Minutes, meetings, and announcements. We tabled the discussion of minutes due to the efforts that were put forward for the November eighth election, which, by the way, I'd like to thank Linda and her staff for a great job. Twenty-three-hundred-plus voters turned out, eighty-three percent.
Cross that off my manager's report.
Oh, well, I'm just gonna step all over you then tonight.
It's actually lower than I thought it would have been.
No?
That was about where we're usually in the low eighties.
Yeah, it was eighty-three percent or something.
Can you?
Just before we leave minutes, I just wonder if we have a plan, because we've fallen so far behind on the minutes. Do we have a plan to catch up with those?
I think the plan was that we were going to just get the motions, you know, for the old ones, the motions and results of the motions for those old minute, the really old ones, so we get those on record, because those are what's required by law.
Yep.
And just for those really old ones, get those out of the way and then work on the new ones.
Okay, yeah, because it's, they are important, you know, for the public to be able to access them, so.
Yeah.
Good to have a plan moving forward to catch up.
Well said, yep. The next thing is announcements. The next regular select board meeting will be Monday, December fifth, 7:00 p.m. here at the Opera House to be livestreamed. If you note, that is a week earlier than what normally we would be meeting. Some other announcements, we have a wastewater workshop Monday, November twenty-eighth, 4:00 p.m. over in the Richardson Room of the Town Office. We have a library workshop Wednesday, November thirtieth, twenty-sixteen, at 7:00 p.m. here in the meeting room, and that will be livestreamed. And we have a tax increment financing workshop Tuesday, December seventh, at 4:00 p.m. over in the Richardson Room of the Town Office. All other announcements of committee meetings are posted on the Town website. Please check it, because that's where all of the official announcements are. The Town Office will be closed Thursday, November twenty-fourth, and Friday, November twenty-fifth, in celebration of Thanksgiving. There are a number of vacancies on various committees. Those are also listed on the Town website, but we do need both regular and alternate members for our committees. We actually, we're gonna be discussing that in just a moment, but we do have three alternates that are available on each of the committee open committees, and this is for people who would like to be on the committee, but their, the committee's full right now, but if a member is absent, one of them will be designated to step up to be a voting member. Do we have any agenda changes for this evening? No, totally, all right. Public comment. Public comments should be directed at issues not under discussion on this evening's agenda. Comment from the public will be welcome prior to each agenda item. Further comment will be granted only by permission from the Board. All public comments should be brief and to the point. Do we have anyone wishing to make public comment this evening?
Well, first of all, we all survived the election. Congratulations, Owen.
You have a very full plate, so good luck, and, you know, you've got a great community here to represent, so, good. I wanted to just talk briefly about the library, because I know you're gonna, we're all thinking about that a lot, and I would just ask you to really, really carefully go slowly about thinking about where we go from here. Exercise your fiduciary and moral responsibility to really look at all the options and be as transparent as possible. I mean, obviously, it was such a close vote. We're like the country. I think we're divided kind of half and half, and like our state. So I think you have an opportunity, really, to look at all the possibilities that the light, that we've been talking about over these, what, last five years, if not more, and really spend some time to get some good sense of where people are, but also, more than that, what are the real possibilities before us? And I would suggest that we have kind of three possibilities. We've, we have the existing site, and what, twelve, twelve-hundred people or more voted for that, and twelve-hundred people plus nine voted against it for a lot of different reasons. Some thought it was too big, some thought it was too small, some wanted it at R E S, some wanted it in the old existing building, some thought it was unattractive, some, one woman I talked to said she voted against it because there was no parking for the elderly, or that she had, you know, trouble finding. So there are just so many variables, and I know you're thinking about a speaking tour again, and it seems like we've done a lot of those, so I'm not sure we're gonna get anything different, but I think what I would really suggest is, I think the three options that we have, spend some time, maybe a year, I don't know how long, but let's get some good cost estimates for what each alternative would be for kind of similar square footage. You know, our existing proposal was, what, nine thousand square feet? I mean, could that be a little bit less or not? I don't know. And if we had, went back to that original R E S proposal, could that be scaled down to our, to like around eight to nine thousand square feet? What square footage would the existing site be able to provide that would be good for a real, a real library in it? I don't know if that's even feasible, but it's something to worth, to me, that's really worth looking at. And then my thought was, later on today, at some point, if we could put all three proposals out to the voters rather than one that's yes and no, that seems to be getting us in trouble every time. And I was thinking, well, we have ranked choice voting in the state, so what if we did ranked choice voting on our library? So your first choice, your second choice, your third choice, I don't know. I just, I just suggest that you go slow, think about it, certainly talk about it on your listening tour, but I'm not convinced we're gonna find out anything more than what we already kind of sense and know. But what's clear is, as a community, we're not unanimous, I wouldn't expect unanimous, but we don't have a clear message about what our good people want, and so that's, that's my request, as you think about it, and especially for your workshop on the thirtieth. I would say, we had pledges for almost two-hundred-and-forty thousand for the new library, which is significant without really doing any real work. And we had twenty-two applicants for a project manager position and a really good possibility for a consultant to help us, so I think we could do that someday if that's ever on the table again.
I guess, okay, I'd like to take this opportunity to thank you and the Capitol Campaign Committee for getting that ball moving and getting as far as you have.
We were ready to go.
I know, but really appreciate the efforts that you had put in.
And my question has to do with that, is that where do you see that committee going in the coming months? Are you gonna do anything more?
Well, we're on hold. All the applicants, we've told, it's, everything's suspended for the moment. I think if we resurrected the existing plan in some way, the new library, I think there would be a lot of energy for that. There might be for the R E S site. I think there's a lot of concern about the existing library, whether that would even really be feasible, number one, if it would be ADA compliant. There's so many questions about the existing library. I don't think our members are as feeling as willing to put that effort in to try and renovate that old building, but, you know, I don't know.
But, you know, whatever, you know, I mean, you talked about gathering information. If your committee's in a position to do that, then we'd be happy to hear that input.
I think the existing proposal, even if it was, I don't know, if it paring down is, I mean, I'm speaking for myself. If it were maybe, I don't know, pared down in some way, I think we're very enthusiastic about that, for sure. And I think something comparable on the R E S site, probably, we would be as well. I think the concerns are more with the real feasibility of using the existing building in some way.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Anyone else like to make? Please come on up.
Sally Clark, I live in the village, and I agree with much of what Joan said, that there has never been a really clear vote on all of the options, and I've said before, months ago, that I still wasn't convinced that the old library was, couldn't be resurrected, that I hadn't seen any really hard evidence that it was dangerous or unredemable. The engineering report didn't address a couple of things, like air quality, and didn't look at all of the foundation work. And I'd just like to remind the Select Board that two years ago, there was a very strong, overwhelming vote against the move to R E S, partly based on the slogan, "Keep, Expand, Improve the Old Library." And the people who were in favor of a smaller library on that site, whether new or expanded old building, have never been given a clear vote, and, and in that sense, kind of disenfranchised. And I think allowing all three options, a good, a vote would be a really good idea.
Thank you. Anyone else like to make a comment? Joan, you look like you're all ready to say something.
No.
Oh, okay.
We somehow need to lay it all out to people.
We'll start that process on the thirtieth, so, and everybody's welcome to come.
Yeah, the more, the more people that show up for that, I mean, because we're in an information gathering mode at this point. The vote failed, if I had the slimmest of margins, and we don't necessarily know why, and the more, the more we can find out why, the better off we can move forward. And I would agree that, at this point, slow is probably best, as far as that sort of thing. I hesitate to put multiple choices. I've never been in favor of multiple choices, because then you get, you get a winner that's not a majority, and that's, that's a tough situation, so. But if there's some way that we can find out which proposal might be the best one to forward to the voters next, that would be helpful.
So, I hear you about the multiple choice, but in my brief time here, it has seemed to me as though we've repeatedly asked complex questions with a yes or no answer, which is a difficult thing to do.
Let's hold that discussion for when we get to that point, you know, that, that would be a discussion that we would need to have before we would actually put that, something like that, on the ballot, so. Hearing no other public comment, return to the Town Manager's Report.
Well, seeing you stole my first item, but I did want to congratulate Linda and her staff and all the volunteers that worked really hard on this election day. You know, it's a very stressful time, Linda, I know that for Linda, it's very stressful. She takes, like most town clerks, they take elections very, very, very seriously, and so it's really stressful for her, and she did an excellent job. There were a couple of stressful moments during the election that she handled really very, very well. I was very pleased with how, how everything happened. It was, there was a lot of voters, there was a lot of people coming through the door, and for the most part, people were pretty happy. They were, they were pretty happy. I think in the beginning, there were a little, there was a little bit of tension because the line was so long in the beginning, but there was really no way around that, because they started lining up at about quarter past seven to start voting, so it did make it for a long day. There was, as you mentioned, there was an excellent turnout, eighty-three-point-five percent, which isn't a record, record. The presidential election in two thousand and, in two thousand and twelve was eighty-four-point-six, so that it really wasn't a record for us, but it was, there were, there were a lot of people. What was different about the, this election was we had so many newly registered voters, and in this election, forty-five-point-two percent of the voters chose to vote early. And what's interesting about this part of the process, and I'm not recommending changing it, but it just, so we understand what it takes, is the amount of work that happens in the Town Clerk's Office for a voter that decides to come in and register early, if they come in and, not register, if they come in and vote early, and they actually walk into the ballot booth and close the curtain and vote right then, the amount of work is relatively small. When they take the, their ballot out, the amount of checks that have to go in to making sure that that's properly handled amounts to about fifteen minutes of total additional time per vote. And with the numbers, you know, we had one-thousand-and-sixty-seven voters that voted early, and Linda estimated that about sixty percent of them took their ballots home. And that, what, what you're looking at, and you can see the math, is you're looking at about a hundred-and-sixty-five hours of time that they spend in that office dealing with that, that newly acquired job. It's great, because it means people are actually, we, we got a really good turnout. I saw in the paper today, I think the average for the county was eighty percent in Knox County, and our, our turnout was eighty-three and eighty-three-point-five percent. So that's, that's great for us, and we've traditionally had a higher voter turnout. Our, our voters are pretty responsive in, in turning out. So just, you know, I just want to make sure that, you know, we recognize Linda and her staff and the volunteers as well, because there's a, I don't know, how many volunteers do you end up with for the whole day?
Total of sixteen.
Sixteen volunteers that work the whole day.
Work and get paid.
Yeah. So, and as, as you know, you'll see in the letter, that one thing that was very helpful was the, over Rocknecks, they allowed us to park staff over there, so all of the Town Office staff and election staff parked over there, so it freed up all of the parking spaces around the Town Office and in the fire station for voters, which made a, which did make a big difference in those high, high-volume time periods. Summer Street is our last remaining piece of work, is, there's a few remaining items in the punch list, the stairs and stop, I think, has the stop sign been put up?
Stop signs up, they mounted the bases on the handrail.
Okay, yep, so the bases on the handrail, everything's, everything's pretty much done. We do have some flow, water flow issues, and we're not sure if, about the grade to, you know, as, when you see it come down the hill, whether the grade is correct, whether it was done right, or if it was done as according to design, or designed, you know, to get the water to the drains, because there's several drains on the, if you're looking from the, at the bottom of the hill, on the right-hand side, where, when I've gone by, there's little to no water going in those drains, and it's going down the other side of the road. So we're working on that piece. Hopefully, we're gonna get some rain tomorrow night, so we'll be able to see how that, the best way to look at it is see where the water's flowing.
You stand up there with a garden hose at Jan's house.
Yeah, yeah. So, so we'll be working, looking at that in the next, in the, you know, the next week or so. This high sidewalk is on hold until next spring. We formally decided to do that, because the utilities are not getting moved as quickly as we would like, and rather than have the project get into the part of the winter and then having to close this, the high sidewalk, we decided to forego that and just leave it open. That sidewalk does get a lot of use, and if we had to close it during the wintertime, that would mean people would be walking in the street, which would be very dangerous, particularly in the wintertime. You know, with snowbanks and everything, it would be just, it would be dangerous. So we're, the, the plan is that the utilities have all, we still wait, who?
They were working on today, they're still.
Yeah. Keep in mind that they were notified just about a year ago. This West Street sidewalk extension, the new traffic lights, those, in a, as you see in my notes, that there was kind of a strange turn of events. We were planning on building the sidewalk on the other side of Route ninety, Route One and, the intersection of Route One and Ninety, and started that project, and what happened was the D O T came, one division of D O T said to Mike, "Well, why are you, why are you putting the sidewalk now, because we're planning on replacing the culvert here in the next few weeks?" So we stopped, and in the process, Will, I think it was Will was talking to somebody at D O T, and they said, "Well, you know, they're bidding out that part of the sidewalk on the other side of the street." So we've been on hold, and the, what, the way it looks now is the, the signalization isn't gonna get changed until the spring, nor is the rest of the sidewalk gonna get done until the spring.
Seriously?
I met the gentleman today that was there looking at the project for D O T to put it out of the bid, so they haven't even bid it yet.
Yep. So.
Makes us look really dumb.
Oh, yeah, it does. I mean, we were ready to finish it.
Yeah, I know.
We were, we were ready to be done, and it's, so now Mike's gonna have to go back and fill it back in with dirt, so people aren't driving over that, you know, off the edge of that curbing, off the edge of the pavement. So, but the whole, the good news is that they'll be paying for it. So hopefully, the sewer covers, another thing that makes us look kind of bad is the sewer covers that we have on Pascal and Central Streets. They're, they're low, and we've had a lot of complaints about those. We raised those up before the pavement went in, according to the way, to the measurement that they told us we should raise them, and we raised them up to that, and then they came in and put in two inches of pavement, Mike?
Yeah, most of them were like two inches, inch and a half.
So now we've gotta go back and cut in, and, and I think that's gonna be done tonight. I'm surprised we're not seeing them out there, but we opted to have a local contractor do it, because they can do it at night, and so they're gonna come in and raise those up, but it's, what it will look like is that the town didn't know what they were doing, and now we have to go back and cut the brand-new pavement, which we have to do, put in new collars, raise it all up, and it will make us look like we didn't know what we were doing, which isn't the case. The winter parking ban goes into effect November fifteenth. We'll not be ticketing right away, but it could happen if we get a lot of snow. Chief Gagné has begun, will begin a program of notifying residents with a friendly reminder, a friendly reminder to cars that the officers see parked in the right-of-way, to just give them kind of a little advance warning that there's a winter parking ban, and it gives them a little heads-up, so that before they get ticketed, they get this friendly reminder, because people forget. The Marge Jones Field and other public areas, Mike is, is just gonna close them as weather requires, because we are still getting a lot of use of Marge Jones Field, as Owen will attest to, and also the.
Bochamp Point.
The Bochamp Point Road is still open, because the weather is still good, and people are still driving through it, driving through there.
Is that going until the fourteenth, or close out on the fourteenth, too?
It depends on the weather.
If the weather holds it.
That's been the thing with Marge Jones, it's still perfect for people to use it, so why shut it down?
If people are, if, it's in the, the spring is the one that's the more dangerous one, because if we open it too early, then it causes damage. But even like with Marge Jones, when it comes to maintenance of the fields, we, you know, we'll have, we'll use a, you know, just some common sense will prevail about, you know, allowing maintenance crews to get in there and work on the fields, instead of just a date that's picked, I think it was April fifteenth, was it? April fifteenth was the date, and it could be sometime, in some cases, it could be later than April fifteenth, you never know. But, so I, and I think a lot of people, you know, a lot of people appreciate being able to go in. The one area is Glen Cove will be closed Monday, as of today, right? You closed it today, or?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow?
Today.
But one of the reasons for that is we budget to have the portable toilets pulled out, and so once those are out, we, we need to close the, close the place up. The Public Works Crew has been working on getting in, all their equipment in shape, which, which does take them some time. I think we're all set, pretty much, but trying to get everything, to make sure that everything's working correctly, because when that first storm hits, it will, you know, it causes a lot of, a lot of angst on everybody's part. But we are in good shape for sand and salt, everything's filled to the, to capacity, so we're in good shape there. The fire department's been relatively quiet over the past few weeks.
Yeah, yeah, it's knock wood here.
The chief has been very busy with the fire prevention stuff. He's been, he's worked on fire prevention issues for the past couple of weeks. He's off at a training today. He's been off at a training since Thursday, I think. The recreational floats have been hauled out. I, I think today you hauled out the.
One.
The one float, the.
Yeah, the other, the other float on the other side.
The one of the floats, we leave the, one of the fishermen's floats in longer, because they're still, they're still fishing. And the Heron float, which stays in until after Holiday in the Harbor, because that's where Andre works out of for the fireworks people. The C I P, we're working on finalizing that, and we'll be presenting it for just a presentation to just give it to the Board at the next meeting, so it will, it will start that process. Holiday in the Harbor is back in full planning mode, and this year, we're planning on bigger and better, correct?
Okay.
Always. So, and that's my report.
One of the things right on that we didn't talk about, just wanted to mention, is the twelve houses on, which may come up later, I don't know, the twelve houses to be caved in have been done.
Oh, okay.
And everything's set there, with no, no issues.
Right. Great, thanks.
Okay. Any other questions of the Town Manager? And we will move ahead. Under unfinished business, we have a minor change that we need to make to the alternate committee member policy. This is to stagger the terms of those. Stacy put together the changes, which really appear to be three words, and that was in our packet tonight, so I'd entertain a motion to approve. So move. Second. Do we have discussion? Owen?
What's the actual definition of staggered? Is it one year, or is it?
Three members, three years, year one, year two, year three.
Okay. I was only curious if we had an applicant, and then the next month, we had another applicant, because their three years is from whenever we approved them, and didn't know if a month difference, a couple of month difference was staggered, or was it a year, like you're saying?
If we were to approve somebody tonight, that appointment, if they're the first person on, would go until twenty-nineteen, or, no, twenty-twenty.
But we wouldn't be able to?
Because that would be, well, would be, the remainder of three years out. If somebody comes in the next month and applies for the same committee, theirs would go one year shorter.
Okay.
Okay, and if somebody comes in the month after that, that appointment would only go until that, this June.
Okay.
We could then reappoint.
Okay.
So, that, that way, they stay staggered.
Yep.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor of the change? That is unanimous. We can fill that in with fourteen now. Going into new business, we have no, so, we have no acknowledgement of gifts, committee resignation, or committee applications. So we will now move to our ongoing discussion with our police chief. Chief Gagné, why don't you come on up?
I will add, by the way, we will have a committee application for ordinance review next time, so we'll fill, have somebody there.
Yes. Mr. Chairman, as you will note from my report in, from Andy's, Randy's memo, it's going very, very well. I have to say, it's going better than I had hoped. There's been, I've had a number of positive comments, and I've had, I haven't had a single person come to me and say that they didn't think this was a good idea, and that with a complaint, concern, no one, and I've reached out to the officers several times when I, when I see them. It's, sometimes it's hard to get to all of them, because they're on such odd shifts. Sometimes it's hard to get to all of them because they're on such odd shifts. But none of them seem to have any complaints and actually they have a lot of positive comments because they feel like, you know, they're getting the training they need, they're getting the support they need, they're getting the equipment they need. So it's going very, very well. So this is the, the four-month kind of checkup and as it says in my notes, this would be the time, if you're not, if you're thinking we want to change course, be the time to think about that. But if you have any questions for Randy.
Next month we'll have to extend the agreement, if, at the very least. My only question would be how, what's your perception of how that other town to the north thinks it's going?
I can tell you, I haven't had, I haven't had any negative feedback from either town and all the feedback that I'm getting, and it's not because I'm biased with this, is very positive. I keep getting the, why haven't we done this, didn't we do this a lot sooner, is basically what I've been getting. Like I said, the last meeting, I think the anxiety part of it subsided in two weeks when we get into this. And everybody's working together great, the officers are working together great, the whole agreement is working very well. We are getting a lot of training over here in Rockport that the officers have been looking to get. A little hoarse tonight, I don't know why, but.
You stayed up last night to watch the football game?
No, actually I didn't. I was asleep pretty early. As far as trainings go, you know, that's been a very important thing to us. I've told all the officers, actually in both departments, we're going to do an internal audit to make sure that there is no training that has been missed this year. We've got, everybody in Rockport is, I believe, has completed their mandatory 2016. Plus you can see by the memo, the amount of elective-type training that we've offered in the last four months. You know, I wanted, I was shooting to get everybody at least forty hours. Officer Smith, I've got to get him one more class to get him up there. But, you know, I think his is the minimum at twenty-four and then we're looking at some of them that have been over forty. Travis is around seventy-six hours of training.
He attended a class, right?
Yeah.
Week-long class somewhere?
He actually has attended two week-long classes. He attended the FBI Supervisory Leadership Institute. It's the FBI LEDA Program. It's a regional program that FBI LEDA, Law Enforcement Executive Development Association, offers regionally. It breaks up the modules. Not everybody can go to the FBI National Academy because it's a ten-week, I think it's still ten weeks. And that's a long time to be away, but it gives us the opportunity to regionally do that. I also had Travis and Robbie Scharr attend Crisis Intervention Team Training. If you've looked around the country and seen issues that are going on with policing, that is one of the things that they're recommending that all police officers take. In Camden, we, I think everybody but two of us have had Crisis Intervention Team Training. It's going to be a mandate, I believe, at some point. Let's get ahead of the curve here and have all of our people trained. It's great training, de-escalation-type, dealing with people in different crisis situations. So that was free training, we had to pay the overtime, but it was offered locally. I try to get as many of those as we can. As you can see, law enforcement training is expensive. The one FBI class that Travis went to was about six hundred and fifty dollars, well worth every bit of the money.
The thing to think about is that not training them is, training them is a lot cheaper than a lawsuit.
Training is always cheaper than liability, is what I like to say. We had a week that was a scheduling nightmare that we got through. I had a death in my family, my wife's father-in-law passed, my wife's father passed away. Lieutenant Gary had a medical issue, Travis was away at school. Everybody stepped up and filled in where they needed to for both towns. We were running light on coverage, but I asked everybody when we went to the range together, this is going to be a week, that we want to be able to offer people the training, but schedule-wise, I need everybody to pitch in, and everybody did. Wasn't, you know, nobody second-guessed anything, it was, everybody stepped up, which is very good. And that's, that's what I've got every time I've asked for extra, and that's in both departments. It's, it's been quite an experience, it really has. I think the opportunity for officers to see other towns, to cover calls there, vice versa, you know, back and forth, gives us better coverage because they know the area is better, they know the problem spots. I think I told you the last time, we've implemented some, not mandatory, but responses that if there's something that's at the hospital, until we know that it's just something that a single officer can take care of, we start two-unit response to all calls like that. So the coverage is much better as well. I can't think of any negatives that I have seen and I would let you know if I'd seen any. I think it's going very well.
The place where I thought we might have some concerns, which we really haven't, I haven't, I haven't heard a single comment about it, was when Randy was saying, well, we had that scheduling nightmare and we had Camden officers actually on patrol here or responding to calls here. If we were going to have any, any pushback, it would be then, but as long as the call is getting responded to, they're not checking to see who's patches on the jacket. And, you know, people are getting their, their calls responded to. And I, we haven't had, I haven't had a single complaint or concern about that at all. It's not, it doesn't, it's not like it happens all the time, but that week was, it was a tough week, you know, with everybody being out.
It's, it's always good training when you have one of those, it's the unexpected. And when we can pull together and make that work and everybody gets to go to training, we have ample coverage, even though some, some officers worked a lot that week. You know, it's not something we want to have happen, but it is, it is kind of a good training for them that, you know, at a moment's notice, we can have this. A couple of times this summer, you know, we had four or five active calls going on at once and I'm sending units from each department to different places. And even in the busiest of times, it might have been a little chaotic and hectic, it's still manageable. So we got through the busy part of the year, we've got through some major incidents and we've got through some scheduled snafus that, you know, it all points to me that it's, it's working out.
One of the things Randy's also doing with training is often the, the officers in both departments, he'll send two off, one officer from each department to training together and you see a lot of that. The range training, everybody was there, but a lot of the other training they've done, they've had an officer from Rockport and an officer from Camden there at the same time. So it's, it's built that kind of team, teamwork.
Yeah, there's, there's also the built-in cost savings of transportation, hotel lodging and things like that. But it also, it's good for them to go together. We had a great day at the range, we did full-range qualification for everybody in both departments. We even let Rick shoot and he actually did really well, I was pretty impressed because he listened.
Everybody's way back.
People standing on both sides of it to make sure he didn't turn around.
He's a pretty daring man, he had like fourteen, fifteen officers standing behind him with handguns, so I.
They didn't realize that, I had the, I had the headphones on that you could hear through and I had to yell out, "You do realize I can still hear you."
The comments were all nice, though.
Chief, we're going to be, you know, fairly soon asking you to lead budget review and preparation efforts for two different towns. Is that, do you have concerns about the, your responsibilities and your ability to lead that effort simultaneously?
Just don't schedule them on the same night.
Yeah, so.
Camden has been a very good place to learn budgeting. We have a very thorough review, as I'm sure you, you do here. We have, I believe, twenty members on our budget committee, if not more. As you saw last year, budgets in Camden were highly scrutinized by the budget committee, which we should expect them to be highly scrutinized. I don't see that there's going to be an issue. Yeah, it's, it's a lot of work, but I've sat down with Megan already and my preliminary figures are in for a lot of the budget lines. I can tell you that, based on the history here, I wanted to sit down with Megan to go through to say, what do you think is good in a lot of these? I just, I don't know. I'm going to try to keep them as close as I can, but there are things, there's always things that break. I had something that broke today that's quite expensive that Rick and I are going to talk about tomorrow to have fixed. It's the unknowns, you've got some equipment there that's, I'm all for getting every bit of use out of expensive equipment, but there comes a time that you've just got to replace it. So there's little things that come up, but, no, to answer your question, I, I think we have good people in both towns that are willing and wanting to assist with the budget process. So, like I said, as long as you don't schedule them the same night, because that'd be a little conflict. No, I think we'll be do, do just fine.
I did send an email to John French suggesting that the two select boards get together in January to discuss this arrangement as well as a couple of other items. And he said he was going to be taking it to his, his select board. I think they meet tomorrow night?
Believe so.
Yeah, so, you know, he's taking that to them then, so. Owen, you were going to ask a question?
One thing is that, you know, because I knock on a lot of doors and talk with random people and they're not necessarily calling up the town manager, so I have heard a couple of complaints. What's interesting, though, is they all seem to just be perception, like Rick was talking about. The perception of seeing a Camden cruiser in Rockport and vice versa. What's also interesting is after about five to eight minutes of talking with them, explaining the process we went through, the ways in Rockport has benefited, the ways Camden have benefited, what we're doing, moving forward, oversight, additional training, they're sold on it. They're, they seem to not have, you know, typically changed their tune about, oh, okay, so we're actually realizing a lot of good benefit here for the town of Rockport by doing this, so. And I encourage any perception, basically, without a lot of good information. So what I wanted to, to kind of know was, is there a way, maybe we can talk offline, but of getting more of this good stuff that you report to us into the hands of people, you know, who write for the papers? Just because, you know, if people become aware of it, then the transition becomes that much easier.
Well, I'm always, my, my office door is open in both towns all the time and I encourage people. I gave out my email when I first started here, to contact me if you have questions because a lot of it is perception, you know? If you don't follow the regular goings-on of the town government and whatnot, you might have that question. Why, why are we seeing all these Camden, this is not a hostile takeover, I just want everybody to know that. We do have to work together. I try to limit that a lot, that's why I've got an unmarked supervisor car in both towns so they can go between towns and it doesn't, doesn't bring a lot of that, you know, why is this going on? But I encourage anybody to contact me and, you know, I'd sit down with anybody and explain policy, procedure, what, what we're doing. Throw that out there.
Just one quick question, because I think the next step for us next month will be to renew the agreement for another six months. That will take us to the end of the budget year and my only question is, do you have any, or will you have any suggestions for any changes needed to that inter-local agreement for the next six months? Or is it going to be okay?
I don't believe so. I think we went into this with a really good agreement. Like I said, we, we had gotten that from Bar Harbor and we changed a lot of stuff. I sat down with the supervisors to make any adjustments they felt that were needed. They were picking up liability in each town for officers and to sit down and go through with them and they were comfortable. I think we have a very good product and I haven't seen anything that we need to change at this point.
I didn't anticipate that we would, I just wanted to, you know.
No, I mean, it's always good to review, we've got six months into it. If there were problem areas, they'd be, you know, we'd see them by now, I'm not seeing that.
And just building on the Bar Harbor thing, are you still keeping good touch with them? Because I'm curious, at this point in their process, how were things going? Did they need to shift gears? Can you glean any good insight from what they did?
I can tell you that we're probably at the nine-month stage. I mean, Jim Willis was the architect of this and I thanked him for every bit of help. If we had to start off ground zero with this and build everything ourselves, it would have taken a lot. We were able to take what was the necessary steps and get them in place on day one. So I think we're much further ahead than we would have been. And it gives us that opportunity to slow things down a bit and look for any problem areas. And right now, we're not finding any.
And I did, I have been in contact and spoken at length to both of the managers in Bar Harbor and Mount Desert. And both of them unequivocally say it's working great there and they have no regrets at all about what they've, what they've done there.
Okay. All right. Thanks, Chief.
Thanks, Chief.
All right.
Appreciate the effort and you coming in tonight.
All righty.
Next item is a presentation by the harbor committee. Sam here.
Drive safe.
Well, hello, thanks for, thanks for having me. I'll be relatively brief here. You know, use of the harbor has been strong, you know, more, more and more every year, it seems. You know, a lot of the issues that the harbor committee has dealt with have been really how to allocate the space we have available. You know, dinghy space has been, you know, maybe, maybe that's the thing that gets a lot of the most conversation in our meetings. You know, and we're, we've made some efforts, we've had some efforts to increase the space available through, you know, shuffling the ways in which dinghies are kept, essentially. You know, we also spent a lot of time this year talking about the allowable size limit for inner harbor moorings based on a commercial fishing inquiry. I think we've settled that to everybody's resolution or, you know, satisfaction. The harbor's seen increased commercial use this summer. The, the boat ramp is something that I think is often overlooked by the town in, in terms of its importance. You know, not only does a lot of the community use that to good effect, but, you know, the, the commercial haulers, really that's, you know, that and Rockland are the, you know, the most weather-protected boat ramps around. So that's sort of maybe a, a resource the town doesn't, you know, realize fully. Also, being in the boat storage business, you know, knowing what other people are up to, you know, generally, there's a lot more boats around. You know, I know a couple commercial users have gotten, gotten moorings just for their transient boats now and, and are using the town floats in the shoulder seasons, you know, to good effect, which I don't think interferes too much with, with the recreational fleet, but that's certainly something that the harbor committee is, you know, aware of. What else? Well, also on the commercial side of things, we've recently made a change to allow the commercial users charter boats, mostly, I think it's a twenty-minute tie-off spot on the towns, on the town floats on the west side of the harbor. You know, similar to what Camden does in a couple spots, I believe. And that was, that's, I hope, the end of a, of a long struggle with some of the commercial users who felt like the east side of the harbor was not, you know, pretty enough for what they were trying to do.
Yeah, I know we've got some plans for beautifying that side.
Yeah, yeah, so, so that, that may evolve.
I didn't know you could beautify bait. But it's all good.
My dog thinks it's lovely.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, you don't have to beautify it for him.
You know, budget-wise, you know, I, I know Abby feels like there's not a lot of fat in the, in the budget this year. You know, the, the committee sees upcoming projects, you know, among the higher priority items coming up would be, you know, more dinghy space created by adding floats to the river. You know, and then a bigger ticket item would be dredging in the river and, and getting some more use out of, of the Goose River a little further up.
Can you expand? That was one of my questions, twofold. One, on that east side of the harbor and what dredging would do to expand commercial opportunities. And two, the boat ranch, boat launch on the west side.
Yep.
Are we running the risk at some point in the not-too-distant future of only catching certain tides to launch your boat?
Well, it, it depends on how, how you.
With proper planning, it's pretty stunning how large a boat you can get in there, but.
You just got to do it at high tide?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we launched a eighty, eighty-eight-foot, hundred-ton vessel there.
Really?
Yeah. Nine, ten, ten feet, ten-foot draft, so. Nine, ten, ten feet, ten-foot draft, so.
So, it's still...
With planning, you can, you're, we're unlikely to need...
Well, but, but I do think, uh, you know, having seen some of the drawings for the proposal of, of new floats on the, on the east side of the river there, we would need to be careful to not impinge upon that, that hauling slip. Because if, if you put floats in the river right up near the footbridge, say, yeah, that's, that's the, you know, that's the direction you're backing a trailer towards. I, I think that's, certainly those plans need to be, you know, thought over a little more. I, I do think, I do think this, it's tighter in there than those drawings suggest. I, I also, you know, being around that area a lot, feel like the Goose River is actually, uh, um, a pretty wild place. You know, there's, there's otters down in there a lot. There's, there's, uh, you know, gray seals up in there a lot. There's, you know, there's trout in there. I mean, there's, there's a lot of stuff going on that you would want to be careful not to, not to lose. So, so I, I think it's, I think it's worth going in that direction, but, but thoughtfully.
But jeez, if we can get boats that big out there now.
What are the... So, the logistical hassle for that is staggeringly high. But the resource is there. I mean, and, and so I think what Sam's getting at is the committee has observed a need for more dinghy space. I, my own perception is that when you look at the amount of acreage of water there in comparison to the way in which we're using it, there's room to improve. But we want to do so deliberately and thoughtfully.
Yeah, yeah, in, in conversation, I hope, with, you know, with the commercial users that might, might be there, so that they really have an understanding of what the option is and isn't. You know, that, that there, there's gonna be, you know, pluses and minuses, you know, if the lobster fishermen go up in there. You know, it's gonna be tighter, it's gonna be more protected from the weather, it's gonna be more tidal.
One of the reasons for dredging is, it, it's not a significant dredge, but it's, there's a hunk of ledge there in, at the entrance. And also dredging just a little bit so that it makes the launch ramp more usable even at low tide, but also so that the fishermen have more space, particularly in the wintertime when we pull the other floats out, that fishermen that are still flowing, uh, still fishing have a place that they can get to in, in more tides than they currently have. Because currently, there is, they can't get in there at a dead-low tide.
Mid-tide, uh, mid-boat tide.
Right, they can get in there fine, uh, but, you know, if fishermen need to go out, they need to go out. So, just a matter of trying to balance that need with the need to, uh, launch boats. And I think we, didn't we discuss even if they were launching, if, if the Rockport Marine or anybody else was launching that big a boat, we could move that float?
Oh, yeah, yeah. Yeah.
Because you'd know about that, that big a boat.
Yeah, those kind of launchings are, are planned years out.
There was all kinds of stuff that had to be done.
So, um, I happen to know just from, because on my, on my tour of the town, Mike and Abby sort of walked me through the whole area. And, and so I have a, something of, of a, of an idea of what sort of long-term visions are for the, for the whole Marine Park area, at least with regard to what, what Abby and Mike had an opportunity to explain to me. It's not totally clear to me how much the select, the, uh, the harbor committee broadly participates in those conversations, or whether or not, or, or how the, the prioritization of those plans will happen. Can, can you speak to that at all?
Well, the, the way it's gone so far, i- in my years on the committee, has been that the, that I would say Abby and, and Mike sort of take the committee's temperature, you know, as they're developing these things. But I, I wouldn't say that there's been a, a real clear direction. Well, they, they get our, they get our temperature, but, but we, we don't, um, you know, we don't vote on, you know, ways we want them to explore or anything like that. Does that get at your question?
Yeah, I just, I, I, I have no agenda with the question. I just, um, truly didn't know, you know, how, how broad a conversation that is and, and who's shaping the priority. And, and I say that without even really knowing what Abby's formal responsibilities and, are with regard to, ma- maybe it's entirely your call to shape that policy. I, I don't know. So, I, I was just interested to know a little bit more about how the...
So, the, the other thing...
I'm sure it is.
Charge, or their fair view?
My fault for not...
That, that's, that's the other thing that's pertinent here is, is, you know, we've explored a little bit what we feel like are, you know, where, where we, I mean, do we end at the high-tide line, or, you know, do, do we go into the, you know, park a little bit? And I would say we've adopted the view that, um, you know, we have, have given input on the park, and, and maybe not so much the, um, the east side. Although I, I think everybody's happy to share their opinion, but, 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 you know. You know, we'd certainly look to you guys for direction around that as well, if, if that's us, or if you'd rather that be parks.
Keep in mind that that committee, in recent months, is up to full speed and actually meeting regularly and having a good, solid quorum of participation. So, um, you know, they've been sort of limited in the past because they weren't meeting regularly. You know, with Sam's help and everybody else's help, it's, that, that committee has become very active, meeting regularly and meeting with a quorum regularly, which is a good, which is a really good thing.
I'd be interested to see the aftermath of a joint harbor-parks committee workshop, where you all could possibly discuss that.
Sure. Yeah.
I have a question about, uh, you mentioned the commercial users getting a 15- or 20-minute slot on the float that tie, you know, charter boats at whatever.
Yeah, yeah, so we're not talking about lobster fishermen there, but we're talking about the other users, right.
So, are those regular users, or is it just an itinerant thing, or once in a while, or?
Um, I'd say they're regular users.
I asked, I asked the question because I wonder if the harbor committee has thought about maybe licensing, that's what they do in Camden, is that day sailors are licensed and they pay an annual fee, and then they get to use the trade-off with the floats or whatever.
And I believe that happens. I, I believe it's, it's not much, but...
It's not much, no, but we have something for a commercial permit, and then the, the 15- to 20-minute spot, that is gonna be loading and unloading for everybody.
Right.
So, but it just gives an opportunity for a commercial user to come in and have a dedicated place where someone's not tying up for an hour.
But we have seen the use by a few of the windjammers, kind of for the first time this summer, and, and we were talking about, you know, what to do to, to foster that in the future.
That's right. And, and that use, well, you come to think of it, that use has been a little bit of pick-up and drop-off. Yeah, yeah, it also has been overnight dockage, which has been cool and a nice use of, of those new docks.
Yeah, we'll be voting on that in a few minutes.
You know, so, uh, so previously, that commercial use permit bought you, um, a spot at, I believe it's E-Dock, the, the dock closest to Rockport Marine, the, the town dock closest to Rockport Marine. And one of the, um, one of the tricky pieces of that is the fishermen are on that dock a lot. And that's, that's not really the way that's supposed to go. So, some, so the other commercial users, they don't actually gripe that much, but, um, I can see why they want another option.
But that, that E-Dock is, is never a, it's, it's a dock that will never have any long-term tie-up on it. So, if, if everything goes well, and our docks are really busy, and people are on them pretty much all the time, that's a dock that is always gonna be available for a pickup, touch-and-go, pickup-drop-off.
Emergency, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I, I mean, I would modify that to say unless a lobster fisherman's engine is broken.
Yeah, well...
Then, then you have somebody there for a couple days at a time, occasionally. But that, that's, I, I think you got the, you've captured the intention of it anyway.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Yeah, happy to.
Thanks for the time.
Our next item is the approval of the 2017 harbor fees. We do have a brief memo here indicating that they do have one minor change that they would like to make, and that is to provide for the windjammers a $35 per night charge to tie off at our, our docks, as an encouragement for them to come in.
Yes, and you've captured that beautifully. It, we, I called it a commercial use fee, because I didn't, for lack of any other better, better word, but to capture, um, in Camden, they do, they do this as well, that if, you know, one of the day sailors comes in late, drops off passengers, and wants to stay on the dock, they pay, I think it's $40 a night to be there. So, we were just looking for a way, you know, we've done the dollar, we, we added, implemented the dollar a foot charge for mooring holders and for Rockport residents. But a dollar a foot for some of these bigger boats adds up. So, um, in order to attract some, some of the windjammers to come in, just on their, you know, hitch, to come in for a night, which I, I think would be great, I was proposing a, a $35, uh, nightly charge there. To be used at discretion, if, you know, if there's a 115-foot footer coming in paying $3 a foot, we may have to talk, but that will be my discretion.
Owen?
A question, and I don't care who the person was, but it says they voted five to one. What was the issue that one person took with the fee schedule?
And actually, Sam is here tonight.
And I don't care who it was, I'm just curious what their gripe was with it.
Sort of a wording, uh, you know...
I'm happy to, yeah. I believe the way that was, um, that was written, that, uh...
It just said "commercial," and then you...
And that would include, um, you know, boat haulers, boat, uh, boat builders, boat, you know, stores that, uh, that didn't maintain a waterfront presence. It gave them a very cheap option to have waterfront property that, um, you know, some of us pay a lot of taxes to have. You know, you, you could, you could do a lot of work with your $35 a day, you know, dock space.
So, the intent for this $35 is for the windjammers, is that correct?
Correct.
Is there any, any other possible use that you would use for it?
Yeah.
Because if there isn't, you could simply call it "commercial passenger vessels."
Commercial passenger vessels, I think, would be a more...
And then that, I would think would remove...
Right.
Would remove that.
Right, right, we could easily amend that to say that.
Couple of questions, because I can't read it on the spreadsheet here. Under overnight dockage, it says "Rockport residents and/or mooring holders," and then there's some more words there that are covered up.
Oh, um, oh, I think it says "if space allows." So, if someone's paying, if someone's, they're paying full price, then it...
I got it.
We don't want to throw away an actual, serious revenue generating...
Right, if, if there's an empty space sitting there and someone wants to come in and pay the dollar for it.
And then the other question is, how are you dealing with the electrical hookups now? Are they getting charged for that extra, or does that, is that included in their per-foot overnight fee?
They are getting charged extra. It's $20, it's not, not on there? Should be on there. Added it, $20 for 50-amp power and $10 for 30-amp power. That might've just been an oversight that it wasn't on that, but it was last year. I can, I'll put that back on there, but that was something we voted on a couple of years back.
Okay. New resident, what are these?
Well, I will move to approve the harbor fee schedule with the added passenger wording to the commercial boats fee, and to make sure that the electrical fees are included.
Get on there, yep.
There is a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Move and second it. Did you have any further, anything further there, Owen?
I was just trying to read.
Okay, no further discussion?
Sorry.
All in favor of the motion? That is unanimous. Thank you, Abby. We're gonna move on to the Goody's Beach feasibility study presentation. And we have several people...
Yeah, I asked Jamie to do a little introduction.
Yep.
Jamie Franco-Mano for the Planning and Development Department. Uh, this Conservation Commission, uh, is, is very talented and dedicated to water quality issues. And, um, that's basically due to who's on the committee, but also some of the issues that have been raised in the town are fairly weighty. And one of them is the, uh, a violation recorded in, uh, the fall of 2013 for water quality at Goody's Beach in particular. And, um, there's been quite a lot of, uh, study and sampling conducted in a less formal way by the committee, and, um, uh, leading up to the, um, to the project that Gartley and Dorsky has taken on, which is to prepare a feasibility study. And, uh, in the feasibility study, there's really nothing else is needed. By way of introduction, there, they've explored a few different things to do to address water qualities at Goody Beach, Goody's Beach. And, um, among those, I'll highlight the, uh, the basics. They have, um, looked at a lot of the things that the ConsCom, the Conservation Committee has done and could do more of in a more formal way. A more formal regime of sampling for establishing a baseline of data, for example. And, um, a more formal effort at, uh, education, um, for the many users of the beach and of the harbor who may be affecting water quality, um, without knowing it. And so, uh, Kim Kimball is not here, the new chair of the Conservation Commission, but she was very enthusiastic about, uh, getting the committee more focused on those things, whether it meant, um, bringing forward a new group of volunteers or, or more focused efforts of the same people, but also possibly budget recommendations that relate to those, uh, those basic housekeeping things that are mentioned in, uh, the feasibility study. And here we have Will and Bill to go into the much more technical aspects of the study.
Good evening, I'm Bill Lane from Gartley and Dorsky Engineering and Surveying. And I'd like to begin by echoing, uh, Jamie's, um, acknowledgements of all the work that has gone before. We're very grateful for the hard work that the Conservation Committee's put in for a number of years, the dedication of the Harbor Master in particular, the outreach and support from Maine Healthy Beaches and Kerry Kaysor, uh, in particular, and the Select Board Liaison. So, all those sources of, uh, uh, prior knowledge and direction were very helpful. We were asked, uh, to look specifically at a outfall, which was identified by the prior actions of the Conservation Committee as being, uh, a target contributor to enterocoxi levels at Goody's Beach, which is the outfall immediately adjacent to the beach. Uh, it actually comes through the bulkhead on land that the, uh, that the condominium owns. That outfall collects, uh, drainage from Pascal Avenue, and to a limited extent, there's a graphic available, uh, within the study, on up through a watershed that reaches largely to West Street, um, and then over up to Route 1. And the charge was to, um, quantify the amount of water that would be, uh, flowing from that discharge location, and then to assess the feasibility of treating that water for this, uh, for deleterious conditions. And that was defined in refining the discussion as that which causes public health advisories at Goody's Beach, which is the enterocoxi level. At present, the level limit is 104, uh, most probable number, MPN, per 100 milliliters of enterocoxi, the bacillus itself, or a value, a sustained value of 35 in five samples, uh, within 30 calendar days. Based on the way that data has been collected, only the 104 value has really been assessed with any, uh, body of information. But we have determined that there is a correlation that when the, uh, all the data is assessed, about half of, uh, the... about half of the exceedance values, those values over 104, occur in relatively dry weather conditions. So we're looking at probably a substantial contribution from base flows from runoff and other sources, as well as substantial stormwater contribution. The other corollary that we were able to make is that as concentrations go up at Goody's, concentrations also do go up at this outfall. It does not exclude the possibility of other vectors, other uses in proximity. So we've quantified the values that we're talking about. In the base flow conditions, we're talking about through the heavily used months, approximately 30, 10, and 8 gallons a minute of flow, very low nominal flows as that base flow. But you first get into storm collecting data, and suddenly the amount of water that needs to be dealt with jumps straight up. So we looked at what are the practical alternatives to treating simply base flow at two levels of treatment, two log, meaning 99% removal of enterococci, and four log, and then also looking at treating two log of the more or less first flush quantity of water running off during stormwater events. And those quantities of cost have been evaluated. While going through the treatment assessment, however, we did go through, sort of look at the matrix of things that could be done to effectuate treatment, the more conventional stormwater treatment practices that are employed in most places, and then down to, if you're strictly talking about microbial contamination, what would you go after as a methodology? Specifically, we focused in, after narrowing down from filtration to disinfection, what type of disinfection we would consider would be appropriate would be UV. And then we came through with an estimate of the scale based on those flow numbers that I provided, and converted that into a capital cost and operating cost, which are summarized in the table. But what we did determine as well is that in assessing the mass balance of water that's at the very least containing contaminants, has been identified as having contaminants by prior work by the Commission, including Ells Brook, Goose River, the outfall from Lily Pond, and then some other smaller drainage areas, including Brook Street on the east side, that this outfall, while it's very close by and it's certainly visually striking to anybody who uses the beach, is less than a half percent of the amount of flow that comes into that pocket of the inner harbor. So there may be other vectors for contaminant that if you completely treat this one location, that you still may have exceedances at approximating the same rate. We've also been able to identify that during the time that the Conservation Committee is doing, has been doing its work, and been charged by the Select Board to do more, that predicated on the data that's collected, concentrations do seem to be going down year over year. And this is occurring during relatively dry seasons. So very possibly this public education outreach is yielding benefits as well. So we would suggest going forward, understanding that we have quantifiable costs to implement treatment, but beforehand, in order to bring this forward with consensus of the folks that are going to need to approve the funding of it, that some of the basic management steps that have been implemented be enhanced, that a greater educational component be employed with harbor interactions, people getting their moorings, paying their sign-up fees, their slips, their overnights, their launches. And to some extent, because the harbor use isn't going to go away, the other vectors of risk need to be heavily assessed, and one of them that can be dealt with by policy would be dogs utilizing that beach, and that would take action as a policy or ordinance by the board. So those are kind of the broadest of strokes. As I say, we are at the point where we understand ways forward, and we're happy to discuss continuing them and make suggestions, not the least of which is an old suggestion to some extent, is that that outfall, because it does have, at the very least, a very striking visual component, could be rerouted to at least increase its distance from the beach itself, and if it's carried into the depth of the harbor where there might be some current available, increase the amount of dispersion from the other sources. So that's a very, very broad strokes overview, but we're, I'm also understanding that the Conservation Commission is probably going to come forward with, after assimilating some of this information with some recommendations to the board.
The most striking thing to this, to me, was the fact that we, based on previous data, had been under the impression that the contamination was linked to heavier rain events, and you seemed to have come to the opposite conclusion. Can you speak to that at all, and what the possibility of the previous data showing that and your data not is?
Well, everybody understands that the delivery mechanism is by water, and so there is inherent in announced closures of clam flats when you have a stormwater event move through an area, an idea that you're going to get non-point source pollution move into water bodies predicated on the stormwater movement. So we're just looking at all the data collected and noticing that all, a lot of data points pile up when plotted against precipitation in the previous 48 hours at the zero mark.
Wow.
There's still just a lot of data that's been collected that is in relatively dry ambient, which doesn't mean that's no flow in the base flow of the streams, certainly if the goose isn't stopped flowing or any of the larger flows, the Ells Brook, you know, this one may or may not be a dry flow at that particular sampling point. That's not quantifiable back to the 2008 data, but it does seem to suggest that with enterococci, there may be these other heavy vectors that are just as important and that you can...
It's just very different.
...over-focus on this outlet and still not have efficacy.
And then the other question I have is having to do with the precipitation data that I noticed in the report, that you would use data from Alleshead or Knox County Airport from Weather Underground, and I just, you've got to be real careful with that data, because that's an automated sensor down there and it is not online all the time. So I just, I don't know how heavily you depended on that. The Mirror Lake data from the water company, a real person observes that, so it's a little more reliable.
Most of it was plotted against the main water company, the commentary, the discussion we were having about all the data that plots up against zero precipitation in the prior 48, that's derived from main water data.
Good. That's better.
I think I can add to Ken's first question. Those observations about, is it the pipe or isn't the pipe, really don't have to be in conflict? The observations that the Conservation Commission has made and the rationale for announcing that the beach should be closed or that swimmers should be warned is sound, because there's the pipe right there and you can see the proximity. But the fact that all these other sources contribute is also undeniable. So all we did was ask Gartley Endorsky to sort of show their work so that those assumptions would be present in the matrix. And what, where the responsibility goes is back to the Conservation Commission or the Select Board, if it gets too expensive, to do a more formal sampling so that we can learn more. And it may be cost prohibitive. We're never going to get a modeling of everything going on in the harbor. And so this was a straighter line to a logical course of action, and I think it was a really good compromise with all the data that we had.
I was just recalling data tables that Bob Kennedy put up in previous presentations that indicated, you know, when they measured the rain, that there was a much stronger correlation than what's shown in this report to heavy rain events and actual pollution at the beach, the pipe notwithstanding.
I think, unfortunately, it's my fault that Bob is not here, because I wanted to have this discussion after we had the final report rather than a draft report for some of these exact reasons. I think if Bob were here, he would, he would take up this conversation, but I think we can agree that the data is interpretable and that it is not going to establish a smoking gun causality for what's coming out of that pipe. And so the next question that we have to ask ourselves is, what would it take in terms of evidence for us to be able to justify doing something? Because the costs, you can count. They have delineated what can be done, and you can figure out what those solutions are going to require in terms of financial resources. What I think is most interesting is that wherever you come down on what this data says, there is broad agreement that this pipe is a contributing factor to the bacterial levels at the beach. Filtering is not an option. If we decide that UV might be a good idea, we have to satisfy ourselves that it will actually reduce the bacterial levels at the beach in order to justify moving forward on that path, right? We're not going to spend hundreds of thousands of dollars.
Have no result, yeah.
And so then there, you get this very interesting question of, well, how do we establish whether or not it will, I won't use the "solve" is the wrong problem, whether it will have a meaningful benefit? Can I ask you guys, you did a good job describing that, can I ask you to just explain to the board the concept of the pilot project and how we might establish whether or not a positive outcome can be achieved before we jump headlong into a big cost?
Can I just build on that real quick so you all can do like a big bulk of talking? You had at one point mentioned that that pipe only added half a percent of the overall flow, but can you show some sort of direct correlation that even though it's a small contributor of actual fluid, it contributes a higher percentage of the bacteria I can't pronounce?
Well, I think that's actually part of the problem we had. We know that that pipe does contribute, but a lot of the other sources do too. And it's such a, it's so dependent on so many variables, you know, whether it be the tide and the wind and how everything is interacting together in there, that it's definitely very difficult to predict. And I think what we came, and you did a great job explaining that, Brendan, but, and what we came to is, it's awful hard for us to, I mean, we like black and white. That's just the way we think, right? We want to get an answer and know that it's going to work. But in this case, it's not black and white, that we spent an awful lot of time looking at, if we're going to recommend to you to spend a couple hundred thousand dollars, then we want to know in the end that it was worth it and that you're not going to be just coming back to us saying, all right, that's $200,000 down the drain, because we're still having the same number or close to the same number of exceedances at the beach. And that's where we got to a point, after getting all this data, that we struggled with, how do we recommend this? This isn't what everybody's going to want to hear. They're going to want to hear that that pipe is the problem, and we're going to fix the problem, and it's all going to be good. And we just couldn't get there. So I think to figure out if we focus on that pipe, what is the improvement? The first thing we talked about was, well, how can we get that water somewhere else? Let's find a different place for it to go. But because of the geography and the contours and just the lay of the land there, there really is no easy way to divert that anywhere other than pumping it. And so if we did that, you know, how would we do that? We talked about, can we discharge it to the sewer for a couple months and see if that makes a difference? But again, there's an expense to that. You know, the sewer treatment plant doesn't really like that idea, right? Their whole goal and everybody's goal is to stop stormwater from getting into the treatment plant. So it wasn't the best idea, but we still talked about it because we felt like it's a definitive way to stop that pipe from outletting down there, and we would at least know whether it had some impact or not.
Well, you say you would know.
Well, you'd think you'd know. If we still had exceedances...
However, we don't have static baseline measurements either.
Right. And that's the other tough thing. So I think that's why we came to where we were at. We also spent a lot of time looking at, how much does it take to reach that 104? And it's a surprisingly small amount. You know, a thimble cap of dog waste could make that exceedance hit 104. So there's just so many factors here that we were trying to think of, all the low-hanging fruit, you know, what can we do? The rack line along the beach, if you get a little bit of bacteria growing in that seaweed and debris that sits there, the sun doesn't get underneath it, but it's nice and warm and moist, stuff grows very fast. A lot of places have beach cleaning programs where they get that stuff off, because that's where things grow. Let's keep the dogs off for the three months where people are swimming there. There's a lot of beaches that we've worked on that have a program like that. From September to April, people let the dogs go, but for June, July, and August, there's a program to keep them off. And then that pipe, if it wouldn't be that tough of a permitting or construction project to extend that pipe out into the harbor and at least not have it so close in proximity to where the beach is, and I think that would help us also determine if that was having a big impact. But you do all that, and you're not going to be sure which one had the most impact. So it is a very dynamic problem, but it, we just couldn't get to a point where we could stand up here in front of you and say, for $200,000, the problem's going to go away.
What would it cost to extend that pipe?
I think you're probably talking more like, I've spoken directly with the DEP and the Army Corps, and neither one of them have a problem with permitting that. And it really is as simple as connecting on to that outlet and laying a pipe along the bottom and anchoring it down. The trickiest part is that it has to be done with a diver. So, I mean, maybe 20,000?
Selecting material's got to be right.
Yeah, I mean, the pipe has to be the right material, and then, you know, there's collars that you can use for anchoring them and weighting them down, and we'd have to coordinate with the Harbor Committee and, you know, all the boaters to make sure we got it in a location where it wasn't going to get hit, where mooring chains weren't going to, you know, damage it. But I think if you extended it 400 or 500 feet out from where it is now, it would at least let us know that it's not having anywhere near the impact that it potentially could be now.
And do that in conjunction with clearing all of the vegetation off the beach?
Yep. Have a program for cleaning the beach, keep the dogs off during the swimming time, and, you know, just continue what Abby's doing with, I mean, the pump-out is huge. I think we need to make sure more people understand that it's there and how to use it.
And that's where volunteers on the ConsCom can really push the message.
And it's not just the harbor, that entire watershed. I mean, if there's somebody that's, you know, piling up their dog waste in the backyard that's then running down the street and into the catch basin, that goes right out that pipe.
Well, one of the things that, again, Bob Kennedy, back to his presentation, talked about was that he measured not only the enterococci baxis bacteria, but also there was some human byproducts that were involved, and led him to the conclusion that there was a human source, so that the dog waste, obviously you don't want dog waste on the beach, but that the dog waste wasn't necessarily the issue, that there was a human source somewhere. Maybe that's the boats, I don't know, and the pump-out, some sort of...
Well, I think that came from one test out of that pipe. Is that right?
It was a metabolized nicotine product.
Yeah, but they had measured it several times, I thought.
And that was straight from the pipe? That wasn't, that wasn't a harbor sample, that was a pipe sample?
I think it was a harbor sample. I'd have to look back.
It was a sample coming out of the pipe at the harbor.
Yeah.
Yeah, but, yeah, okay.
And I thought it had also been measured on more than one occasion, but I would have to defer to Bob about that.
Yeah. That was like three or four years ago.
Because that was...
It was a major study.
That was the data that led us to look at the sewer, to say, you know, to check all those sewer connections, because, well, jeez, it's not the raccoons, it's not the dogs, it's got to be the people.
It's the gypsies that cram... It's the gypsies at Kramer Park, Mike. Dipsies.
That's a hard one to chase down.
But towards, towards the end of the resolution of that, you wouldn't memorialize essentially a public health problem like a broken pipe or a practice by instituting treatment. You would go more as, to the more effective route of eliminating the behavior or solving the infrastructure problem.
Yeah, we spent a lot of time and money trying to do that.
Absolutely, absolutely, yeah.
Owen?
So, just a couple, two things real quick. One, as awesome as it would be to do all of these things minus the UV, because that's just expensive, we'll get there at some point, does it make sense to be strategic about it and implement certain things, continue a testing regime, implement new things? So extend the pipe, continue to test for a couple of months before you do the beach cleanup or however it is that you choose to plot that path out? Does that make sense? Because if we did implement all of them in the span of two months or so, we could run the risk of going, great, it went down a little bit, but really what was the problem? Whereas if we did one individually, we could potentially, I'm only throwing that out there.
You're right, I mean.
Well, the only question is then is, in my mind would be, I mean, just on the face of it, cleaning up the beach and keeping the dogs off the beach and those, those are no brainers. So if, if something else ends up being the cause, then we don't care. Those are probably good things to do anyway because you don't want toddlers playing down there with dog waste and, and, you know, it just makes sense to do those things. But as far as extending the pipe goes, that's, that's a different question, I think, because that involves more expense and you want, you want to know that that's going to do it. I mean, maybe you do all the easy things that don't cost anything and see if you get any change and then if you don't, then, then you spend the money.
Well, and that gets to my other question, which you had mentioned at some point, by your analysis, every year, the level of bacteria has been going down. On that same trend curve, how long until we're within an acceptable range? I'm just curious.
No, I don't, I don't think you would, I don't think you would get there. And, and I think what you're describing with your first question is kind of this Schrodinger's cat problem of the issue. You're, you're bringing more public awareness to it right now. So maybe the next conversation that a CONSCOM committee member has or the harbor minister has with somebody who happens to live in the watershed is going to change their behavior enough to actually, you know, change what's coming through the, the pipe or maybe the other side of the river, changing some, you know, some behavior, but you won't know that.
The answer to my question about how long, too long, is the answer?
Yeah, not, not reliable. I mean, you, you still want to see this better than is. And at the very least, I, I think you're, you're taking an appropriate view of do the things that return good value for the money to implement and then ascertain whether the next step in a season, the pipe extension, is, is warranted. So, you know, you might have a 2017 plan, which is largely broaden the education effort and.
And more rigorous sampling. One of the tough things is that we didn't give them a lot of data that samples the same, two different places, for example.
Well, Trump might conclude it beyond the.
Without, without a, extending budgets to their, their limits, you know, there, there could be more data collected, you know, throughout the watershed at the same point in time. And that may, that may bear some fruit.
The problem with this.
Joan had a question at some point.
This exercise, I, the inherent problem, I think, is are we looking for improvements or are we looking for proof? And.
I'd say yes.
The actions that we take in order to foster the one will inherently undermine our efforts to arrive at the other.
You've been, you've really stepped up on this. Do you think it's within a couple arms' reaches to get to a?
Look, I mean, what the hell do I know? I'm not a scientist. But I have a hard time believing that a pipe that we know is discharging bacteria in such close proximity to the beach is not a significant part of the problem. And so understanding that the rest of the system is complex, that is not complex. That, that is simple. So to me, the next question is, what does this body need as justification and cover to do something about that pretty simple problem?
No, it makes sense.
If I'm going to look at taxpayers and say, I'm collectively taking 150 to 200,000 dollars of your money to address the bacteria that I know is in this pipe, but is coming into this pipe right next to where your kids are swimming, that, that seems pretty defensible. But only if it's actually going to reduce the amount of bacteria where the kids are swimming.
And that's.
These gentlemen have come up with a very clear, two, two options for how to arrive at an answer. Can we do some good? Right? The one is to ask, is to, is to pump the water away for a long enough period of time to study whether or not the removal of that water causes the bacteria levels to drop enough that we can say, you know, it's complex, but this is a big contributor. That sounds simple, but it's not simple because if we get a really heavy rain event, we can't collect it all and pump it away. So our expensive effort to even look at the problem could be totally compromised. Or it takes one irresponsible boat owner to come through in the middle of the system and pump out their holding tank right there and, you know.
Unfortunately, that still happens. Seen it to some.
Joan would like to make a comment.
Thank you. Yeah, I just wanted you to know, the commission, DEP commissioner called me several months ago to say he'd talked the governor into proposing a bond to this upcoming legislature to deal with wastewater and overboard discharge issues. So, you know, depending on how that evolves and what it actually talks about and, and will cover, there may be some money available in the next year or two to help deal with this. Just something to keep your eye on and for Owen to keep his eye on too.
What do we do for signage? When you come in, come into the harbor, do they see something that lets them know or do they just get on the hailer and say, what do you have for services? So they know there's a pump out station right there?
Signs on each, on each, at the head of each of the ramps. It's like you use your head, don't.
How often do you see that being used? The, how often do you see the pump out station being used?
During the season, hardly ever. That's why we're going to make the, you know, that be the 15 to 20 minute drop off section and kind of keep it clear for people to use it. Where we do see it is at the end of the season, shoulder, you know, in the fall, people are pumping out their, their tanks, but people don't, you know, aren't using it very often.
If we need proof to do something about that pipe, I think we're going to be frustrated.
I, I don't follow you.
If we need a cause and effect proof that pipe is causing the problem in order for this group to decide to do anything about the pipe, I don't think we're going to get it.
I would agree. And I think that's been, that's been the case all along, even before, you know, we had the study done. I think the study gives us more information and, but it seems to me, and I, and I think we need to wait to let the conservation commissioner weigh in on this because they're the ones that we've tasked with this. But it seems to me that we do the, the less expensive stuff first and see what happens.
Do the stuff on page 19.
You know, do the stuff that says, you know, clean, clean the beach, put the sign up for the dogs, maybe put some signs up on Pascal Avenue so people don't dump their dog waste down the, the storm drains or dump anything in the storm. I mean, people dump stuff down those storm drains all the time. You see people driving by and, you know, dump a cup of coffee down there or whatever. That's put stuff out there that we don't want. Abby?
I would be a total proponent of just, I know it might just be mitigating the problem, but to, to extend that pipe is something we've been talking about since 2008. I mean, the eight years I've been here, we've talked about it. I mean, just having that there, dumping things.
And visually, visually, visually it messes with you.
Even if nobody, you know, no sewer system's coming in there, dumping.
That also sounds appropriate. However, there is a cost to it. And so if our job is to assess cost benefit analysis, you have to try and quantify the benefit. The system's complex. We could extend that pipe and dump it into a recirculation that's more likely to bring it back to the beach. We're not going to commission a fluid dynamic study of the entire harbor in order to get cover for this group to do something like that. I, I'm not saying that I, that I oppose the extending of the pipe, but we're not going to get proof.
I think that ultimately, the goal is to have less exceedances at the beach. And so I'm not, all that wound up as I was when we first started this test is being able to prove why that happened. I think if we implement all of these things that we can, and in the end, we've reduced those exceedances greatly, if we can't point to which one of those things was, was the, the number one cause, does it really matter that much as long as we've, we've accomplished the goal? As far as extending the pipe out, maybe the next step would be just getting an estimate, so that you would know, are you talking 10, 15, 20, $30,000? That might make a difference to, you know, whether or not you do it this season, next season or, or at all. And we just didn't go that far and put much time into it. But I, I don't think it would take that much effort to, to get a ballpark and, and figure out what that pipe would be, how it would be anchored and, and who, who could install it for us.
We could have that for the budget system.
Yeah, we could definitely could do that. And the permitting, like I said, is not that big of a deal. So you're, you're not talking huge numbers there.
But there's, but there's also a, if we want to continue to, to, or, or even raise our level of data collection so that we have simultaneous collection at all of the possible input vectors, I mean, that, that is also something that would require budgeting for.
The other thing we have to think about, of course, is that we're under a notice of violation from DEP.
EPA.
EPA, yeah, EPA for this situation. And Will, I mean, I, I've been told all along that if you're showing reasonable effort to mitigate the problem, that, that they'll forestall taking an enforcement action or whatever. And so the question we have to ask ourselves at some point is if we do all this stuff and we say, okay, we've done all we can do, but the numbers don't change, are we still, is the EPA still going to be after us?
I don't.
If I can help here, is that?
I don't think it's quite accurate to assume that the EPA is coming after us. I think they gave us a notice of violation.
But there is an enforcement action they can take connected with that.
They, we did learn a lot about the, the likelihood of that without going back and saying again to them, here's all our cards, what do you think? We haven't done that next step. And the reason is that they weren't pursuing a violation. They came at our request. I mentioned before, we have this body of really talented volunteers, but that great strength for science can be a weakness when you're too obsessed with proof, right? So what do you do? You invite your friends from the EPA over to take some samples. And they resulted in some information that made us really top heavy with information. So we will follow up with them at the right time, but we're focused on the local goal, which, which Will and everyone else has said once or twice, right? It's the danger to the public using the beach and we know it's a family beach. And so it's those exceedances that we're trying to, to tackle right now. And the, the interaction with, with state and federal agencies is, is important to all of us because it's a mark of quality, but it, it isn't the top issue.
Another question. You, you say it should not be a hard poll to get the permits done.
Correct.
That they should be easy. Can those be pursued before we have authorization to spend the money?
To put the pipes in?
Yeah.
Yeah, you can get the permits to do it. And you've got four, well, with the DEP, you've got four years to start the project and seven years to complete. With the Army Corps, I think it's two years.
Okay. But we could, as a hypothetical, we could start applying for those permits now and put money in the budget to extend the pipe and maybe it all come together so that we extend the pipe first of July of 2017? Or is that too fast?
No, that could happen. As far as permitting and, and logistics go, it could happen.
Okay. I'm just trying to think out, out loud here to say, you know, the first page here, page 19 are all things that, you know, yeah, they have some costs, but those could be easily done. It's the one on the next, on page 20 that talks about extending the pipe that is going to take some lifting.
Right.
So. Thinking, just thinking out loud, do we run any risk if we attempt to get a permit before maybe we've completely evaluated what exactly the pipe would look like and then you have to reapply because we've changed the diameter?
No, no, no. If we applied, if you said to apply for the permits, then we would come, we would figure out what that pipe wants to be and what the anchoring system is going to be. We're not the first ones to do this. I mean, this isn't, we wouldn't be reinventing the wheel here. This is, is a relatively common thing.
What do they do? What's, what's up with Lincolnville Beach? They got that one pipe that goes way out there.
Well, that pipe is a, that's a sewer treatment.
Yeah, because that goes to the facility on the other end of the Marshy area.
Actually, the treatment plant for that is right there on the beach.
Right there.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, so they have, and that's taking care of that little Lincolnville Beach village area. So all those commercial entities there, all are part of that sewer system and, and they have a treatment plant and, and the outfall for that treatment plant is piped out beyond the ferry terminal.
Okay. So what do we want to do?
I think we want to wait for the conservation commission to go through the report and hear what they have to say.
Oh, I thought they meant last.
The conservation commission has reviewed the report. We have had comments from Bob.
What, where I think you're going with this is you, you, you can send to the conservation commission some encouragement not to do nothing. And so it's going to be clear to them from my interaction with them and Brendan's that, that they should go to the extent of proposing at least these two things, page 19 and page 20, if you will. And on page 19, the basic housekeeping stuff, that could be a robust campaign involving, you know, a consultant PR company and, and could be really intensive. But it's still going to be a medium number compared to a slightly heavier one that might be on the order of 10 or 15 or $30,000 for extending the outfall pipe. So we will narrow that down. And at budget time, you'll have page 19 with a number and page 20 with a number. I won't stop short of that for your, you know, your options at budget time. You might do page 19 for three years and set aside funds for page 20 at, in year four, something like that.
That's all part of the budgeting process.
Appropriations, that's the committee everyone wants, right?
It's, it's part of the budgeting process. The only thing that I will say about that is that I think we all know that we're not going to allocate a very significant amount of funding without reason to believe that there will be a significant beneficial impact to that funding. And I don't think the CONSCOM is going to be able to help us with that. Those are, those are tough conversations that we're going to have to have. How much are we willing to spend in, in this situation of uncertain knowledge about the outcome? Not now.
Some things, the, the mutt mitts, getting one closer to Goody's Beach, we don't have. One right there at the, at the steps going down onto the beach.
Yeah, but look, even that has costs, right? Are we, are we, without evident, like without factual proof, going to, going to be willing to say to our fellow townspeople, no dogs on this beach anymore?
I think there's pretty good factual proof that if.
Worth doing.
If the dogs are going on the beach, it creates an issue in the water quality. So that's one of the.
That's not really what I meant. What I meant is, if I tell you no dogs on the beach, right? And so, and somebody chooses to ignore that sign or the mutt mitt such that the dog does continue to go using the beach in that way, bacteria levels stay the same, but we, we did incur cost, right? A significant portion of the town is adhering to this new rule and not using the resource that they, in the way that they used to. Each of these has a cost. Every single thing we do has a cost and an unknown benefit. And I think we should figure out amongst ourselves, how do we deal with that kind of a situation? It's perfectly easy to say no dogs on the beach. I can't prove, I can't prove to you that's going to fix anything, but we can do it. We can decide that's reasonable. And the same is true all the way through treating the water with UV. It's just got a big financial cost attached to it, but still no proof.
Okay.
I'll shut up now.
Thank you. Good on you for taking the project and rolling with it. So what are we doing now?
Thank you, guys, for, in particular, for the executive summary part of it. Thank you, guys, for, in particular, for the executive summary part of it, that was a huge help.
Not an easy, not an easy topic.
We need to figure out the cost now. You know, the estimate for the pipe.
Brendan, has the Conservation Commission opined on this report yet? Have, have they seen it?
Yeah, in fact, Bob had an opportunity. Bob, Bob has seen the final draft. And there were meaningful differences, even if, even if those differences were only just the, the clearer communication with the executive summary. This is meaningfully different to me than the draft that we responded to earlier on. And, you know, Bob, uh, yes, we have opined amongst ourselves, it seems appropriate for the Conservation Commission to make a recommendation to the Select Board.
Yeah, I think so.
One question. How did, what we're doing with the area source research that they've, they've kinda shifted to, how much did that play into what you all did?
You're talking about the entire watershed study?
Of what we're doing, going all the way to Hosmer Pond, basically.
To the best of my knowledge, we only have data relatively locally that
Right.
Yeah, finds its way into this report.
That, that study or that report really didn't have any bearing, other than, the only that had bearing is the, any samples that we're taking at the different locations that outlet into the harbor.
Mm-hmm, 'cause obviously the biggest flow into the harbor is the Goose River.
And as I understand, there's no discernible relationship between salinity and bacterial levels.
Correct. That's, that's been Bob's conclusion.
Would you agree with her, you don't agree with her, or you feel you haven't?
We have independently analyzed it, yeah. You got
One would infer logically, though, that there would be an inverse relationship between salinity and bacterial level if the river was the majority of the problem.
It depends, and we're back to this dynamism, dynamism thing.
Yeah, understood.
If there's a flood, flooding tide is pushing it back, how much is, you know, how much is it being mixed? Is it really, you know, gaining some salinity while it's still carrying a load, or, or not? How much mixing happens, you know, there's been discussions about, well, you know, it is fresher water, so it should ride on the top of the seawater, but it's colder water, so it should, you know, maybe mix a little more preferentially.
So, to what degree does that same kind of analysis inform the five hundred foot extension to the outfall or not? Because the sort of like, ah, it's complex, is
What we were, we're hoping for, and, and we, we had a bit of a discussion during the Conservation Committee meeting, is we're looking simply at the, we're putting out a number, throwing a dart at the dart
As a placeholder.
With the five hundred, the placeholder. Uh, what we would like to know is from the divers that use
Yeah, okay.
the harbor, where is their water moving? Can we get down that harbor? Where is the lowest point that we can get to successfully? But we've got approximately three soundings plotted on the chart in that proximity at that, if you drew it.
So use the low-hanging fruit from data
Yeah.
that you have at your disposal.
Well, and here's another complexity that just came to mind. I mean, we've got the supermoon extremely high tide coming in tomorrow. That means the water's gonna go up and it's gonna get places where it doesn't usually get. What's it gonna pick up there and bring back into the harbor and then move around? You know, who knows?
I mean, that, that is a perfect example of the dynamics of all of this. And I would, it, I'm just not convinced that it's gonna be worth the amount of study. And um, you'd have to take samples during so many different conditions, at so many different locations, all at the same time, to really get to a point where you had confidence in, in what was contributing during what situations, that I'm not, I'm not sure it's, it's worth it. You know, I, I think, I think we gotta, you know, whether we a hundred percent agree, you know, with Bob or not, is, is, it's not a battle we wanna, wanna worry about. It's, it's what can we do to make the exceedances decrease considerably at Goody's Beach?
And consistently.
Right, right.
Good point. Could I, just to finish this whole thing up, did you have any thoughts on this topic that you wanted to share, Abby?
Just, the, what I was thinking about, the, just that, that pipe just dumping right there, and knowing that it has some issues, I would be a big fan of, of trying to extend it, whether or not, whether or not we know that that's the smoking, and we're not gonna find a smoking gun, I, I've given up on that, I would go. Um, and just that, you know, the work that's, there's been considerable effort that has gone in to just testing and monitoring and, you know. And, you know, we'll, on, on, my, in my part, we'll do anything that, you know, you say no dogs on the beach. Like you said, there is a, there is a cost, it will be certainly monetary, it will be lots of
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You know, people, and, you know, we like to be, be friendly, and people love to come down there with their dogs, and even if they're on the leash, and then they'll throw the ball forward in the water. And we do try to pick up any dog waste that's, uh, not try, we do. I have my guys go sweep the beach for dog wicks, you know, daily. Picking up the, the sea weed is certainly, you know, getting the, the, churning out, I mean, certainly a small swath of beach. We have to find someplace to put all that, but that's doable. At ti- at times, there's a lot to, I guess, put in there, you'd be surprised. But, I mean, it is all, those are all things that we'd be happy to do, work on doing.
And, and I'll check with you to see which one has a budget number, you know, there might be one personally.
Right, and, you know, in cooperation with, you know, the public work, whatever we have to do.
And if we do that, it should be as part of a process of us saying, we're doing what we can.
Right.
Not, your dog has been a problem.
Right.
And
Well, you have to logically explain, this, you know, no dogs on the beach, here's why. And the other thing you don't do is you don't put a no dogs on the beach sign with mutt mitts right next to it, that gives mixed sense.
Yeah, well, okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Much better understanding now, thank you.
Yeah, clear as mud.
Yeah, I have less of a, less of an understanding, but
Well, it's
We still looking for that hundred thousand dollar problem?
Okay, uh, the next item we have here, um, I wanna ask, do we wanna take a quick break? We're getting well down into this, there's not much more.
Power through.
Okay.
No?
Fine with me.
I'm okay.
Uh, the next thing is the discussion of the power purchase agreement, solar power person with Revision and, uh, Revision Investments? Oh, Revision Energy.
It's Revision E- Energy.
Okay.
Or, or, is that what the contract, is it the contract with Revision?
Changed the name of the business?
Oh, no.
Oh, it, it is.
Remember, we're, we're getting one company that does solar panels, and, and the same company that's doing the financing, and that's what made Revision relatively unique, in my opinion. Shall I give a little introduction? Alrighty, Jamie Frankamano, again, from the Planning and Development Department. And Bill Burns is here, visiting us. Bill is the founder of, uh, of Revision, and has done a lot of other interesting stuff, too. But we may not have a question that's tough enough for you tonight. I just appreciate that you're filling in for John Luft, who has, uh, lost an appendix since we saw him last. Um, anyway, so, this is a proposal, not just to put solar panels on the roof of the town office, but to, uh, find financing with the same company that's doing the work. And we, uh, in the October meeting, we covered the question of should we or should we not go with a competitive bid process to do that? And the, the municipalities that have reached this fork in the road, some of them have gone one way, and some of them have gone another way. I think the Select Board did a good job deciding, in this case, to treat Revision like a sole-source provider because of their skill and the, the many examples they have of success stories with the PPA. Uh, the only other party I heard from who did a PPA said, "A year ago, I proposed one." So, Revision has done, doing them at quite a fast pace. The next question was, um, what should be in the agreement? And the Select Board chose the middle-of-the-road option for pricing, which is not gaming the system too much about future costs of oil, or other, other questions that, that might influence you. It's just down the middle, and it's the most predictable in terms of cost of money and, and preparing for the probable buyout of the system at the end of the sixth year. So what's left is, um, the question of how to enter into a new contract for services. And we're back here with you today to recommend that you schedule a special town meeting to do this. And this is out of an abundance of caution. We spoke with the town attorney about two issues, and only realized towards the, uh, the last week of the month that, uh, there were two issues. The first issue was the real property rights involved with having a place for this solar energy system on the town office roof. Unlike the town of Lincolnville, who must decide how much of the land area of an important town-owned property to tie up forever with a solar installation that's installed on the ground. The town of Rockport has to exclude everybody except Revision from the town office roof, which is not a space that's contested or controversial. So, we reasoned that the real property interests involved certainly do not trigger the call for town meeting, where you would want the in, the input, of course, from the legislative body of the town in dealing with any real property assets. So the issue is contract for services. You might say that what you have already in every budget cycle is authorization to contract with CMP to purchase power. So why would you need another round of authorization from the voters to purchase power from someone else? But with the, um, the example of the solid waste contract that's been, um, attracting so much public participation, um, we saw an analogy, and the town attorney reinforced this point, that we're thinking of changing who we send the waste to, but also of the technology that's at the, the heart of the process. And clearly, that, that brought out the public and, and a lot of difference of opinion about what kind of contract to tie ourselves into and for how long. So here we have, in the PPA, another example of that, hopefully much less controversial, much more no-brainer, to start capturing some of that energy and saving money on the number-two heating oil. So, uh, any questions there? In a way, we're deferring the, whatever questions are left for a public hearing at a future date, but I
No, I, I'm not sure that I come to the same conclusion on the need for a special town meeting, because, and I wonder if we're, and, and feel free to chime in, I'm, I'm just thinking out loud here a little bit. I'm wondering if we're perhaps setting a precedent that might be difficult to reach in the future if we have to call a special town meeting for any contract that's a little bit out of the ordinary. I, I don't, I don't know.
So here, here's a thought about that. I, I hear what you're saying. But there is an opportunity cost to any, to, to the allocation of, of any resources, and we're spending more money in the near term. We're making a decision that this is an important enough use of those resources in the near term. I mean, I think if you, we all came to the conclusion that it's pretty cut and dry, that it's a financially responsible thing to do. But I think if we had been appropriately forward-looking, this is the kind of thing that would've been involved in an annual budgeting or capital, long-term capital improvement plan process. The fact of the matter is, we've only been talking about this for a very short period of time. I don't think anybody in town knows that we're doing this.
Right.
Oh.
Well, they do after Election Day, they handed out flyers.
And And that did produce a flurry of emails, which was, was beneficial. How, wha- what was your breakout of those emails?
One saying, here's another group that does PPAs. That's important. I, I checked with the provider.
Positive, negative?
I didn't find that it was a, a serious competitor for
No, 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 I meant just by, did you get a feel from the town, did people email you saying, "Why are we doing this?" or "Thank goodness you're finally doing this"?
Well, there are only a few emails, but they all said, "Of course you should be doing solar," so that wasn't the issue, no.
So I did hear, I did hear the opposite, but
Why are you doing this?
Yeah, it was just an, an exasperated taxpayer. You know, I, I may have even, I may have even talked them through it. I certainly shared that we all looked at the numbers, and it seemed, for no reason other than just fiscal responsibility, it seemed pretty cut and dry, but
So, one thing I wanted to pick up with Ken, um, the analogy with the solid waste. Bill, wasn't it any contract over a length of three years?
That was in the inter-local agreement between the four towns regarding midco-solid waste.
And I'm not trying to say that this is why we should be doing it, but
There was a specific requirement there.
And I, I kinda like that, only is, so far as with the CMP analogy, we, we are, we're kind of doing it year to year. We're budgeting out every, every cycle, but with this one, we're making a six, into a seventh-year commitment at a minimum for this, and with that longer duration of it, I, I could be convinced that we need to have a special town meeting, simply for the length of contract that we're talking about here.
Yeah, I guess the length of the contract is, is a mitigating factor, but I'm, you know, I mean, as another analogy, I mean, we budget for diesel fuel every year. I mean, let's just, on the, let's say that our provider of diesel fuel went out of business in December, we had to find another one in January, and, you know, sign a contract with them to provide diesel fuel for the remainder of the year. Would we go to a special town meeting for that? I don't think so.
No, but if we were gonna sign diesel fuel for the next five years
Maybe, yeah.
Those, but those are questions that really are part of the budget process. When people stand up upstairs and ask, what is this line about, what's that line about?
Understand that, yeah.
We are approving the purchase of the diesel fuel, purchase of electricity from CMP.
Uh, purchase of electricity, not necessarily from CMP.
So, does the analogy change for you at all if I said, we're gonna spend fifteen percent more in order to use biodiesel? Do we wanna, it's a, there's, there's an opportunity cost of allocating the resources in that way. It's more expensive in the near term. We could be using that money to pave roads, and we're not.
I mean, in, in terms of, of budget approvals, if, if the budget for the department, or the whole budget for the town is not exceeded, then, then no town meeting is needed, I don't believe. I mean, 'cause that happens every year. We have
I'm with you, on, with Ken's no, no need for special town meeting, on, on the example that you gave, where it's still a one-year cycle, it's just an, it's an increase in cost.
And I'm not arguing that it's required. I guess I'm arguing that it feels appropriate.
Yeah, I mean, and I'm, I'm not, I'm not on, I mean, I'm okay with it, I guess, but I just, I just wanna be really careful about precedent-setting, is all.
Yeah, I don't, I, I think the way the warrant article is worded is, the warrant article is specific to this kind, this, this arrangement for, um, for the solar, uh, the solar piece, um, for solar energy installations. So, if the town decided that it wanted to go further and do another building or another solar installation, um, it gives you the authority to do that. It really, you know, it sprung from me just wanting to follow up on the question, because I felt like, well, what happens if somebody on this board asks that question? I didn't have a definitive answer from town council, and so I went back to town council, and, you know, you get, you typically get the, "It depends" answer. And, um, and then when we drilled down a little deeper, town council said, you know, it's the, the conservative approach is to, to go this extra step. It's the belt and suspenders, the conservative approach, so that it, three years from now, somebody didn't, doesn't raise a red flag and say, "Yeah, but you didn't ask us", and tie up the whole works, um.
And, and that's what, I sort of view this as, as an insurance policy, because if we want to pursue the buyout in the sixth year, or seventh year, whatever, you know, whatever it is, we probably wanna start putting money aside
We will.
each year, which, so if it, the question then comes up at town meeting in June, how come you've got ten thousand dollars, or whatever the amount would be, in there? It's, well, because we have made this commitment, and we had the town meeting, and the town meeting voted XTX to, to approve this. And so that's why that money is, that's in there.
Sorry, the panels are already on the roof. You know, that's what you don't wanna be.
Yeah.
Okay.
So.
Ken, but you, you bring up an interesting thing, so it made me stop and think. What are our more-than-three-to-five-year-in-length contracts that the town engages in? We've got solid waste, wastewater, uh, help me out here. What are our longer-term contracts that the town engages in?
Most of them are down in the two-to-three-year range. This, you know, there aren't that many that go long-term, but Phil did say, it's, there's nothing in the legislation or our, our, um, charter that says there's a specific number of years, but typically, we've been using about a three-year
Yeah.
window, but there's nothing that requires that.
What's our contract with Camden with wastewater?
Twenty years, I, it's a twenty
It's coming due in a few years.
Rockland, too, is a long
Yeah.
Only get the union con- Only get the union contracts too, those are three years.
Those are three years?
Yeah.
This is just an interesting one, it falls at, at a, an awkward length of time.
I'm okay with, with, I just, I just wanted to have the discussion, is all, I'm okay with it.
That's why we have these.
Going on to talking, I, I, I looked at the email exchanges you put in our packets with the attorneys about the contract and, and where do we stand on that as far, 'cause there were a lot of suggestions made by the, for changes to the contract by the town council, and so where do we stand on that and-
Most of them, Jamie can go into it in more detail, but most of, most, if not all of them, have been adj- the contract has been adjusted, and I think, um, the contract over a period of time, the more municipal attorneys look at the contract, the more it becomes part of the next contract or the next contract, it becomes more boilerplate going forward. But I think all of them, with the exception of a couple, were dealt with, which I believe are in your packet here.
All of them were accepted, what the, um, by the attorney Steve Hinchman, who's, uh, in-house at Revision. So, um, and it was not the first time that, that the town attorney a- and the firm of Bernstein Sure has interacted with, with Revision, that's for sure. One, um, issue that, uh, was not resolved, if you will, one, one item of risk that you can't get rid of is a provision in the agreement called the fair market value. A determination is made at year six, if the town does elect to purchase this energy system that's, that's on the roof from Revision. Uh, the, the price for that is established in the agreement, it's a buyout amount, and as you pick which of the three tracks for your, for your, your rate, for the energy, it, you are also building in a financing cost to, to, to dial in that buyout amount in year seven or after year six. The, the reason for that is, um, basically, it, it's a pure financing question. But if at the time, for some reason, you can't get a good solar panel anywhere, and other sources of fuel have done something unanticipated, the fair market value might be way off from the buyout amount that we've agreed to. And the only person that has a problem with that is the Internal Revenue Service, because they have said to Revision, in these six years, here's your deduction for depreciation, here's the tax credit for doing solar in the first place. We don't wanna hear about any nonprofit organization that you're handing these benefits off to, because we want you, consider you the owner of the system. So, later they need to make that sale of the system at arm's length somewhat, and so all kinds of workarounds have been created whereby Revision could, uh, make a donation to the town in a, in a similar amount if there was any difference between the two prices, but each of these is, you know, simply put, that's designed to work your way around, contrary to the spirit of the Internal Revenue Code, so, uh, the, the town attorney didn't recommend doing that, I'm sure Revision doesn't have a great comfort level with it, and it's a small amount of risk and a small potential for a surprise.
I think we kinda gl- glossed over the fact a little bit earlier on, that we've been, you know, John Luft has been here from Revision, from the beginning, and we've kinda gotten used to him. Bill, the co-founder of Revision is here, y- you live in Camden, correct, Bill? Yeah, so he's here because John had his appendix out today or yesterday.
And Jamie said he lost it.
Yeah, he, he said he lost it, but i- it, it's as, it's another way of saying-
He lost.
He had it removed and he couldn't make the meeting, uh, but if there's any questions, you know, I'm sure Bill can answer them.
And one for the town that may be a question for you, and it's about our roof. The roof looks great, I know it's relatively young-ish, but that seems to be the bigger, broader concern is, you know, if we keep this system on there for seven years plus whatever, do you all have a, the resources in-house to potentially look at our roof and tell us your professional opinion? Or, and I'll look to you all about, I'm just curious, 'cause what I don't wanna do is put a system on a roof that we could've discerned quickly needed to be replaced.
You want me out there?
That, yes, that would be good.
Thank you very much. You got a twenty-year-old standing seam roof, it's a good thing.
I mean, it's twenty, it's twenty-year-old, it still looks really good.
It is really good, a- and, um, I know some towns have actually gone ahead and replaced their roof prior to Revision coming in and doing their job, because, you know, they wanted to get the most out of the roof, but, you know, we, uh, we have a fifty-year roof on there.
So, okay.
Yep, so the short answer is exactly that.
Fifty-year roof.
Uh, the, this, the design engineer, which I think in this case was John, has looked at the quality of that roof and the installation details of that roof and has said that roof is happy for having panels attached to it, and you remember that in, in a standing seam situation, there's actually no penetration through that metal, they're, they're clamped onto the ribs, uh, the standing seam ribs. So, you know, we typically expect the panels to be up there for forty years, and if it's an asphalt roof, we highly recommend that you change the roof first, to just replace the asphalt, but in a standing seam roof, as long as it's under, you know, thirty years old frankly, um, we're gonna go right on it, because we expect it to be fine for another forty years. The roofing underneath a solar array actually, um, is protected, so it actually lasts longer. And you can see that when we remove arrays, the asphalt shingles underneath the panels look brand-new, and the ones on, you know, just outside the array look like they're trash. So, that, the array actually shields the roof from UV primarily, um, and makes electricity out of it.
And, and Bill, have you ever had to educate the town meeting voter on the spot?
Certainly.
Who says, what about this fair market value thing?
Yep, yep, certainly, the, the fair market value thing is a, is a thorny one because of the IRS regs. You have to meet the requirements of the IRS in order to, uh, be able to not have them claw back the tax benefits they took in the first place, and the whole reason you do this process is because the, the municipality cannot take those tax benefits. And those tax benefits are still in existence for another three years, by the way, but at some point they start to ramp down and expire. And after that point, municipalities are, i- if they want solar power, will simply have to buy it outright. The fair market value issue is really what can you put in the PPA contract that meets the IRS requirements? And what you can put in there is a calculation of what we expect the fair market value to be after six years and after, and, and every year thereafter. And that calculation is done by a total economic math formula of the net present value of the future stream of revenue year by year, add it up and taking, you know, the discount rate, which is the rate of inflation of money over that time period, and it comes with, up with a number, and the nice thing about the number is it's the one of three ways that they accept as calculating the fair market value.
The concern is that all of a sudden it's like oil embargo nineteen seventies era, the economics are totally changed, and-
So, the number that's in our contract is not guaranteed, basically, that's the, that's the-
The number, the way, so the way it's written in the contract that is acceptable to the IRS is that it says this calculated number or fair market value, whichever is greater. And the greater has to be there because of the IRS. If you said anything else, they would disqualify your calculated number.
Is there a not-to-exceed delta between that number?
So, now this gets into what actually happens in a situation of a buyout. And a buyout is an agreement between the town of Rockport and Revision Energy, and the transaction happens, any transaction happens because of a willing buyer and a willing seller. And so a transaction happens as long as the price that is, uh, implementing that transaction is agreeable to both the buyer and the seller.
So, at that point, at that seven-year point, if, for example, the fair market value is three times what the number is in the thing, and we'd have to pay it three times, we could say, no, we don't wanna pay it, and we could just continue with the, with the PPA from, from you guys, continue to buy energy. But the other interesting thing about that is that if, the economic circumstances that would lead to that, to, uh, the price being way more, would also be, would also impact electric rates and fuel prices and all that stuff, so we probably, it's, it might still be a good deal to buy them, even if they're three times as much, because we're gonna be paying who knows how much a kilowatt hour from CMP.
Or, or continue to just buy electricity from Revision, or say, Revision, listen, would you accept the number that's in the contract?
Have you gotten to the year seven with one of your arrays yet?
Our first one will be, uh, December of next year.
And who is that?
Goodwill Hinckley School, up in, uh, Skowhegan, close to Skowhegan. Yeah, we have, uh, thirty-some-odd around the state of Maine at this point.
That'll be the first.
Yeah, and that will be the first one, that's the original one.
One of the points in the email talked about the town has to pay all taxes, state and federal, associated with the system, and we might want tax projections, did we get those?
I got that one.
Uh, the, um, the taxes are referred to, the, the Betty and the better scenario, there's an exemption for a power generating facility on-site that does such and such percentage of the power, that you're not liable for those taxes, so it is, that one isn't a question of whether it was the town or Revision, um, you know, a tax-paying entity or not, but s- anybody with this array would not be liable for that tax.
So, that's a non-issue?
Correct.
Okay.
The other?
So, we're not approving the contract, we're asking a special town meeting to approve the contract. And is the contract in the form now with all these revisions from the attorneys that ever, ever, that you guys are comfortable with it?
Yes, and you had mentioned a, a more, a, a press release, could certainly be timed for the, uh, the week of the fifth. And some other efforts to get this particular contract, which is in its final form, into the hands of anybody that wants to, to know.
And not necessarily you, but someone from your organization will be available on December fifth to potentially answer questions, or is this a select board only taking the heat thing?
This would be just like the town meeting when we had representatives from EcoMaine and Fiber Right.
If, if you decide to call a special town meeting, you ought to have somebody from Revision there, because questions will come out of it.
That we can't answer.
I mean, we might do a lousy job of answering, but, um, at least I think we should be able to, yeah, yeah.
So, I move to call a special town meeting for Monday, December fifth, twenty sixteen, at six-thirty PM at the Rockport Opera House in the meeting room.
Second.
Moved and seconded.
Do we have to say what the topic is, or just call the meeting?
We'll do the warrant separately.
We do that next.
Right.
This is just a call of the meeting.
Yeah, this is just. So, we have the motion to call the meeting at a specific date and time for the discussion. Hearing none, all in favor of calling special meeting, that has been called. Uh, we now move on to approval of the special town meeting warrant for Monday, December fifth. And we have the, uh, warrant, a, a copy of the warrant provided to us here. And I will read the pertinent parts. Article one would be to elect a moderator to preside at said meeting. Article two, shall the town authorize the select board to negotiate and execute any and all agreements, and to take such, take actions and execute leases and documents reasonably related thereto necessary to facilitate solar energy installations that will serve the town of Rockport Municipal Facilities. That is what the warrant will read. We then make our recommendation for and against.
Only because I felt like we actually had EcoMaine named in there, is there any reason to name Revision in this?
Uh, no.
I don't care one way or the other, just thinking about what we had done before.
He specifically made it generic.
Okay.
The town, the town council specifically made it generic, the way you worded it.
And the, the moderator is the role that, um, Bob Duke played at the last town meeting.
Yeah, every town meeting has to elect a moderator.
Right. Do I have a motion to-
Move to approve the special town meeting warrant for Monday, December fifth, two thousand sixteen, as presented.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Assuming that we will take a positive vote on this, we will need to sign these right now. It has to be on camera, apparently, or in the public eye.
A single copy, not, not the one that she was as?
We've got, no, yeah, no, this is, we got like five or six copies here.
They'll have to be posted.
Yeah, 'cause they have to go get posted places, so, um. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? We will start signing.
Cameras are still rolling, right, Juniper?
Yep.
Talking about.
All about the hamstring, Brendan.
The hamstring?
Mm-hmm.
Doing something you shouldn't?
He always does.
Notice him staying quiet.
I didn't even mean for that to be quiet.
And the last one.
We take a quick break after this.
All right, as soon as this is done. We also have two other items here that we need to sign, one is thanking Rockneck, uh, for the use of the parking lot, and the other is to thank Tom Murphy for his service.
Thanks, Tom.
And here's one more.
So happy mine's just a scribble.
Yep, it is. Okay. Those are all been signed by everybody.
I couldn't find a town, I know I saw it, 'cause when I first found it.
But it was a oral vote.
I know I saw it when I initially, but I can't find it from the clicking.
We're gonna take a five-minute break, Juniper.
'Cause I had trouble finding it too.
Town meeting vote is not necessary to affect this change. Now, of course, if you made, if you were trying to buy and sell land or even, you know, unload a twenty-year-old F-150 at Public Works, you might want input from the legislative body. But this is different. This is, this is, the whole reason it's revocable is that, um.
My concern, like, it doesn't seem that far-fetched to me that somebody in this situation, that, that the town would want to entice them to extend this in order to not have this icicles falling in the middle of the sidewalk. And that that person would say, I'm not gonna spend the money to do that just so you can turn around and decide someday I have to rip it back off. No.
Most towns in that, in that jam, if they really wanted infrastructure, they'd find something else, like a canopy over the sidewalk. But where you or I wind up and where I think, um, um, some of the members have wound up is, is where Owen is, is that somebody wants to take on this risk. They don't have to sign the agreement, but, but somebody seems, poised to do so.
Oh, and for me is, I mean, I, I had the same visceral reaction that you did when it was first brought before us, Brendan, is like, why would the owner agree to this? But apparently, that's the way it's done, and, and it's done that way, like the, the hotel in Camden there, the baby with all those boughs on it, that, that was the same way with those air rights. That's the way they're granted, apparently, so.
That was a different case, it turned out. That was, that was the case of an existing nonconformity, and a long story. We can go into the land use and the zoning questions, which I think relate to your, your long-term vision about a policy for this, but, um, we have one agreement in front of us, which is ready to go.
I, I just realized, I have a slight concern here, because in their original letter, they just specified it be extended out another twelve inches. Mike has seriously requested that we consider having it brought all the way out over the sidewalk.
I think it was, they were just trying to make it, the impact as little as possible. It, it was to make the impact as small as possible, to give them the minimum that they felt they needed, but, um.
I'm sure they would not object to a condition that they do it in the most safe way that the Public Works Director has, has dreamed of.
Well, they will have to take out a building permit, and have to appear before the planning board.
Well, in fact, uh, the planning board has already reviewed the design. What we tried to do a year ago is, you, you know, we don't wanna put you guys in the first chair for land use. So the planning board did architectural review already on this, which is a voluntary process, but they, they made their approval and recommendation to the select board to proceed.
But does it extend it?
They reviewed, they reviewed it in its shorter version, is what Bill.
The license, the license itself doesn't have.
The set back, that's a different issue.
If I remember correctly, they said to, to make it fall in line.
Yeah, the license doesn't mention the twelve inches. It's only in the memo. But the license says, like Owen said, you know, to make it in line with the neighbors or something like that. And, and maybe, I mean, that's something, if you're gonna bring this back to us next month with that insurance provision in there, then maybe you should look at that wording too, just to make sure that the license is written to what they're gonna do and to what Mike thinks they're gonna do. I mean, I, I, I think, I'll have no problem voting for it next month if we have everything all cleared up.
And are you gonna be reaching out to the applicant, Jamie, to inform them so by next month we'll have something more definitive to look at?
Well, I'm, I don't, the same logic that you came up with with risk, I, I'm not gonna tell the applicant there's a deadline, but I'm gonna tell him, here's, here's what we're willing to put in there, and the spring is coming, and every time the select board meets, there's a chance for you to get ready.
Yeah, so it, it could be that he's not ready, maybe all the pieces don't, don't get it on the agenda for the next month, you know, it, cause that's only three weeks away.
But this guidance is what we were, were looking for, because the, the ordinance review committee didn't wanna get into that policy question, if it could be solved another way.
At least we got him this far.
It's incite, this, this one has irked me for a while.
He's doing, throwing things around over here.
I wasn't, I was using mechanical motion.
We're gonna be out of here before ten o'clock.
We haven't done liaison reports yet.
Okay.
No, no.
Okay, uh, the last item under new business is just to verify the date of the workshop to discuss the next steps regard, regarding the library. Um, that's been set for November thirtieth, seven P.M. here, to be livestreamed.
Do we think this room will be big enough?
Kidding me, we need a boxing ring?
Yeah, well.
For the library?
To be honest, I was thinking, cause I've, I've already, you know, extended the invitation to the library committee and to the ad hoc library planning committee.
The friends.
No, I really haven't extended a specific invitation to them. They, well, you know, Pat was here tonight, so she knows about it. I'm sure they'll have some people here. But, yeah, the whole thing is, we need to start setting the direction that we wanna go and discuss what options that we have.
I think, uh, one thing we need to do is, we need to prepare very carefully an agenda for that workshop as to how we want it to go, because I assume that there's gonna be a lot of people here.
Yeah, lots of public comment.
So we probably need to think about how we wanna structure that, you know, what, what we wanna talk about, and, and like you like to say, what do you wanna come out at the end of the night with? Because I think, uh, with a lot of people here, we're gonna need to have some guidance on that.
Yeah, I, I agree with Ken, you're gonna, the question is, the, are you gonna, typically workshops don't have public comment. There's not a public comment component to.
I think with a couple, public comment is what we need.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
Yeah, we can take public comment anytime we want, you know.
But typically, the workshop setting is, um, you, you may wanna have a se- separate meeting to hear public comment, you know? I don't know, I mean, it's, the, the question is, if it's gonna be that big a meeting, it's, it is a, a more of a challenge to set up upstairs for live streaming. You know, if you want, if you, if you feel you need, if, if you're thinking it's gonna be that big a meeting, setting it up upstairs for live streaming is, is a few-hour job. I mean, it takes, the setup takes.
All day.
All day.
Well, I guess, I mean, at some point, we've gotta hear public comment. I mean, do we wanna use this workshop just to figure out what kind of a meeting we wanna have with the public? Cause I, I don't, if, if, if we don't have the public here, I, I don't think there's any point in us discussing what we wanna do about the library, quite honestly. I think if we wanna use this workshop to, to figure out what kind of a public meeting we wanna have, then that's fine, we can just do that and, you know, not, not expect a big turnout or whatever, but I think if we start getting into the nuts and bolts of discussing where the library wants to be, or how big it wants to be, or stuff like that, that's a meeting, in my opinion, that we wanna have the public at.
Is that what you think we're gonna do?
I don't know, I mean, that's, that's, uh.
I was, I was looking at this.
I think we need, we need to know why the vote went the way it did.
I think it would also be.
Well, that's not what I was intending to have here, because that's, that is a much larger issue, because, you know, the people that are gonna show up to this are just gonna be a subset of the eleven-hundred-and-sixty that voted against it, or the eleven-hundred-and-fifty-one that voted for it.
Right.
And so, we're only gonna hear little bits and snippets, really, when you consider the whole of, of the group.
So let's, so let's, can, can, can you describe what you view the purpose of this workshop?
I was looking at it as us sitting down and discussing where we wanted to move the next steps. Do we wanna go in multiple directions? Do we wanna go in only one direction? Do we wanna give the town manager guidance on doing this versus doing that? You know, get, get the juices flowing, you know, get, get some ideas out there, hear the ideas. That's why I invited the library committee and the ad hoc planning committee, because they both have been involved at one end or the other. Rick has, Rick passed along to us a couple of documents today, that there were other options being prepared by Reed and Company, but were stopped at the very beginning, so it really, they were never developed. Do we wanna think about looking at one or both of those, uh, and creating a new, you know, budget item and going back and looking at that? Or do we want to direct Rick to get some engineers in and estimate what it'd take to fix up the current building and add a two-thousand-foot addition to it?
See, I think any of those questions, I don't, I don't feel like we can really answer without trying to find out from the public why the vote went the way it did. And I don't, I know we won't be successful in getting all eleven-hundred of them in here, but I think, I think we're just, we just go down another road not knowing what will happen, if we don't, if we don't make that real effort to listen.
If it's going to be a meeting like Bill described, um, I think it would be interesting to try to have something printed up, a stack of lined paper with just a prompt that basically says, tell us why you voted for this, or tell us why you voted against it, and try to have it be anonymous, and if we do get a large, we're not allowed to do that. Just something like that, where there's a prompt to where folks feel that they can vent on paper, but only if we're not going to do a public comment style where they could vent in public, or even a little bit of both. Some people don't like speaking in public, and if they could write their thoughts down, and at the end of the night, we have a compilation of thirty, forty different opinions on why or what would've changed your mind, or what would've been more appropriate, what's a tax impact that you think is reasonable, you know, something like that, that gleams better insight as to why.
I think if we had a workshop to talk about that stuff.
Yeah.
Rather than get into, you know, do we wanna look at a bigger li- or smaller library, do we wanna look at a different place and all that? Because I think, I think we have to be, and, and Joan said it tonight, I think, we have to be, proceed very carefully and very deliberately forward, I think, before we start throwing new proposals out there, or looking at new proposals, we, we've gotta do some introspection about how do we, how do we interpret what the voters told us.
I may not be surprised to hear how many people think that the temporary library space is working so great they don't wanna move. I've ended, I've kind of heard that quite a bit from people. Man, I love that new library space.
So, I, I, I think, I, I guess my opinion is either we have a big public meeting and we ask that, or we use our workshop to figure out how we're gonna ask the public to weigh in on the next steps.
And as much as it sucks, we really need to, to try to buckle, for my opinion anyway, just from me, buckle down on the Marybach airs.
That I have on the December. I, Helen is coming back to explain it all to us again, and why it's a good idea, get that title cleared.
This thing had passed, it'd be a completely different conversation, you know, it appears as maybe all the options should be back on the table, and I've always said, if we were able to figure out that we could maintain Veterans Memorial Park and possibly also One Lime Rock Street, that really opens me up to the R E S site as a potential site. But barring that information, it's difficult for me to wanna make that gamble for the town. But that's just me.
I. Encourage everyone on this board to refrain from advertising any opinions like that on, before we have done some fact-finding about why the vote went the way it went.
Well, then, I'm sort of, what I'm sort of hearing here now is that, instead of the way I was thinking of this, that we would be better off taking public comment and discussing why the vote went the way it was, is a starting point for how we wanna move forward. Am I hearing that correct?
I don't feel that way, but I'm, but I'm perfectly happy to participate in that day.
I would agree with that. I think a useful tool in us to be able to have a better conversation as a board would be some good input from folks that voted that aren't us.
Uh, yeah, cause we've put forward three questions on the library and the ballot to this point, and they've all failed, so.
We're not getting that right.
Actually, there was four. It was the citizens petition.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
But it also failed.
That we put on because we had to, and that failed too, so.
We kinda interrupted you started.
No, it's okay, I mean, I.
And though I agree with you, generally speaking, it's such a glaring topic, that I don't see, I don't see the worth in avoiding it simply to, to steer the conversation in a direction we'd prefer. It's, it's been something that has not quite gone away, and as much as we want to say we've moved on from the R E S site to One Lime Rock, this is where we're putting it, they have again shot us down, and I.
No, but I mean, you're, I, I think in just making, just, in just phrasing it in that way, you are placing an emphasis on certain attributes of this proposal that may be accurate, they may be the, the attributes that were the ones that steered people's votes to no, but they may not have.
We don't know. We don't know whether they voted for it, cause, voted no, cause it was too big, it was too small, because it was in the wrong place, because they don't wanna pay taxes, uh, are there any?
The appearance, the parking.
You can come up with probably, you know, eight, eight or ten possible reasons why people voted no, and that's what we need to drill down and find out.
And what you're catching is probably only the third time since you've been on the board of probably the eight times or so I've brought this up, that I would really like to get some clarity on the Marybach estate.
I agree with that.
And that, uh, to me, that's a separate.
Yeah, it, that's a separate issue from, from the workshop, I agree with that, that's,
Separate issue, very much tied to the conversation.
Sure, no, sure, no, I, I, I think what you're talking about is totally appropriate, and we should do it, whether or not we were about to build a new library or not. I mean, one of the problems, I think, with our conduct is that we invited no votes from, by, by not telegraphing what our next step was gonna be, if we got a no vote. There are people who voted against the library, because they believed it was, against that bond proposal, because they believed it was the first step toward, fill in the blank. I think that's one significant part of the problem, and the other part, which I've, I've shared with, with Rick, if not the rest of you, is that I think we're gonna continue to be frustrated if we ask complex questions, where we can only get yes or no answers. Every proposal is a combination of attributes, and if we're not totally confident that there is enough common ground for a combination of attributes, then we're just risking what happened again and again and again.
I, yeah, I suppose, but I, I do shy away from the multiple-choice type questions, just because then you get a.
I'm not suggesting multiple choice on the ballot. What I'm suggesting is, if you go to the ballot not knowing which attributes were most significant to voters. Then you get a yes, or you get a no, but you'll, you don't know why. If we, if this had passed by two votes, I'm not sure that that was better.
Which is one of the reasons we didn't ask for a recount.
It would've triggered action on our part, but.
Okay. Then the next part of the question here is, do we wanna move this upstairs?
Well, what do we, I don't know that we've agreed on what we're gonna do on that.
Well, yeah, but, but we do know that people are gonna show up.
People are gonna show up, there's no question about that.
I doubt we're gonna get a massive, massive influx of folks. Think about the last time we talked about the library specifically.
We filled this room, but, but it wasn't overfull. There were people standing, though.
This is not, this is.
Juniper wants to chill.
This is not the same as that, but the last time around, there was no, there was no prospect for a change of course.
That's true.
I don't think, I mean, there's people.
Oh, I'm trying to, I'm trying to think of some rebut, but I don't have one.
Well, and I'm, this is making me think more and more about what we wanna do at this meeting, because I think if, if we invite public comment, we're gonna get a lot of public comment, I think, and the public comment may be all over the map, which would be good, would be good for us to hear.
Well, we already have a suspicion that.
On the one hand.
It's all over the map.
On the one hand, but on the other hand, should we use this workshop time to determine the format in which we wanna receive that public comment, and what specific questions we wanna ask people to tell us the answers to?
And timeframe.
Because if we, if we just open it up to public comment, then you're gonna get people come in and all over the place, and say, I did, I voted for it because I wanted, really wanted it at the R E S, or I voted for it because it was, I voted no, cause it was too big, or whatever it might be. Do we wanna take the time at this workshop to frame the questions that we really want people to answer for us?
Well, then how do we pursue getting the answer?
That would be a subsequent meeting. I'm just, I'm asking the question.
Or a meeting in, in concert with engaging people in another way.
Maybe we, maybe we'll put a survey out there, like we did for the, uh, for the, uh, that was what Jeff would wanna do, I'm sure. We had this, we had the survey out there for the fiber optics, and we got a lot of response to that, I think.
I, I, I think that we have a lot of work to do, and I don't think we're gonna be able to answer those questions tonight, or even at this meeting. It's, I think this meeting is really kind of like a debriefing of the, what do we think happened, what do we know, what do we, what, what don't we know?
What do we wanna know?
And what do we wanna know, and then, I, I see many subsequent meetings or many subsequent discussions about the way forward. But I don't think we have this workshop and we're gonna know a direction.
Okay.
You know, I, I don't see us at, at this workshop being able to say, okay, we've got our marching orders, let's go do it. I think it's just gonna be a start of, as you heard Joan say, it's a start of a lot of work to get us to, okay, what's next for us? And, you know, I, I don't, I don't think we're gonna get a clear answer from this meeting, and I, I also think the public, the public that will show up at that meeting are the public that we more than likely have already heard from a number of times. And, you know, that will have, they'll have opinions, and, you know, they'll have valid opinions, but I, I think the bigger thing is we need to get a broader cross-section of what people are thinking.
I think an out, a good outcome for this workshop would be a decision on how to engage the public moving forward.
How do we wanna tie in, and I know Joan said we'd been doing a lot of listening tours, but I haven't done any listening tours since I've been on.
Yeah, it's been six or seven.
You know, so tying in, I think that there's the potential to get, I know it's a bit of a long, drawn-out process to do all five villages, you know, over X amount of months, but there's some good potential to get better insight in those forums. I don't know if I agree with what I just said.
I, I'm up and down on the, cause the listening tour is the.
You guys have done them, I haven't done them.
Well, we did it once, uh, well, the first year I was on the board, we did, and that was the last time it was done.
Yes.
Yeah, we went to, we went to the five villages, and, and I think I missed the one that was right here, and that was the most heavily attended one, but the one at Simons and Corner, two people. You know, the one out at, at Rockville had a few more, maybe, maybe ten, so they were not heavily attended. Maybe they will be with this.
What was on the agenda?
It's just a general thing, really. What do you want us to do about the R E S site was one of the topics we talked about at that time, um, trying to remember what else was on there, but what do you want from your select, stuff, very general.
We had a question about the library too, but, you know, we've already gathered together some of the questions during our goal-setting sessions, as to what do we want to learn if we take a tour? Now, we're getting off-topic here, but, you know, that, the library was one of them. Now, going back to this, what do we wanna use this meeting for then? Cause we've had three or four different ideas here now.
You would, I think it's to determine how do we gather the information we would like to have from the public, not gathering the information at this meeting, but how do we do it? Do we, do we talk about a survey, do we design a survey, do we have a public meeting, or we have a series of public meetings?
So that seems appropriate to me, and if that's what we use the meeting for, it should be the first four things out of our mouths at this meeting. We are not gathering the information today. We are talking about how to gather the information.
Right.
Well, then, we should totally then have it downstairs.
Yeah, I think so.
Cause we're not gonna.
We're not gonna attract a, we're not gonna.
Yeah, it's not like we're broadcasting.
You know, and I think we should.
Now, at one point, we'd mentioned the questionnaire, you know, a little bit, you know, piece of paper up there, you fill them out and get in your tournament.
So I've been.
Do we wanna think about that?
I was only thinking no, because if part of our conversation is having a, like, an electronic online questionnaire, getting the same response from two people, we'll double-tap it and, you know, make the numbers.
I think, I think what we wanna do at this meeting is determine, do we wanna do a questionnaire?
Yeah.
You know, so I would say no.
I'm a fan of the questionnaire, anonymous questionnaire, but not if there, we run the risk of getting the same person to give two results skewing what we think we hear.
And I would shy away from talking about specific proposals about the library, about making it bigger or smaller, or here or there, whatever. I just, let's just, just talk about how we wanna gather information about the vote.
Okay. As long as you tell me there's some good traction with the airs, I won't bring Marybach up.
Okay. Do we still wanna have a library committee and ad hoc?
I think that that would be, I think their comments would be useful.
Yeah, absolutely.
I, I also think we could do, we could benefit, perhaps everybody could benefit from a bit of a, uh.
Breather?
No, oh, I do, that maybe, but I was gonna say, just a bit of a postmortem from the ad hoc library planning committee.
Debrief.
Yeah, of just, uh, to hear everybody, the, the people on those committees, to hear their take on what happened would be useful, I think.
Talk to me about the get out the vote effort, you know, what went well, what didn't go well. Again, we might need to ins, we might need to request slash instruct. That, that this is not, this is, this is a process.
Yep.
Yeah.
Discussion.
Here's a quick one, uh, at what point in time is it appropriate to talk about the actual makeup of the individuals on the ad hoc library planning committee, and whether that actually played into how things worked out?
I would, I mean, hopefully, they can, they can be objective enough to include that in this part of the postmortem.
It would be asking people to be quite critical of themselves, which is difficult for humans.
Not necessarily, they could just say, regard, you know, whatever job that we did, it's appropriate to disband this group and start a new one, if that, I mean, I, I don't know how they'll react to it.
Well, if we're not gonna be moving ahead quickly, then why do we wanna keep them?
You might hear from them, they might say, you shouldn't do anything for six months, you should just cool it off, you know?
Okay.
Love it.
Did we check that one off?
Yep. Uh, we don't have the, uh, commitment yet on this, uh, September.
Yep, I asked Megan, she said she still didn't have them today.
Yep.
Can I ask one more question about the library?
Oh, sure.
Is it inviting trouble to offer public comment to just that process question? How should we get the feedback? To let people tell us how they would like to engage?
I don't necessarily think I'd invite it, I think if, if we have the conversation and somebody in the audience wants to contribute, I don't necessarily think I'd, you know, discourage it, but I, I, I think if you invite it, then, and cause it's our job, really, to sort of figure out how to move, how to engage the public, and that's, that's how I see this workshop, is, you know, doing that, in my opinion.
Okay. We done with that?
Excellent.
All right, let's go to liaison reports. We've already spoken about the idea of, that we wanna start considering a listening tour, or if we do, that'll be, uh, decided in December. Rick has also asked that we provide him budget guidance at the December meeting, you know, how do we wanna see it? I think I sent out a, an email, uh, late last week, but, you know, what, where do we want him, or what do we wanna see from him when he presents his budget to us in March? You know, do we want it to have it at?
Flat?
Well, not format, but what's the goal, the bottom line on that budget? Do we wanna have it flat?
Well, I was just.
Do we wanna have it within L D one?
Hoping at next year, it, it, the next meeting, you could have a conversation about what your budget goals are, just a target for me to shoot at.
Yeah.
Whether you wanna see a, if you want me to meet the L D one, I can do that, if you want me to ignore L D one, I can do that, if you wanna set a, a, a target of, you know, a zero percent increase, I can do that.
This is what we need to be thinking about in the next several weeks.
I just need some, I just need some guidance from you about what, what you think is the, a good target for me to shoot at. I mean, part of it is, you know, I have, I have a, a strong. I mean, part of it is, you know, I have, I have a, a strong sense of trust in, in this board that I, I can meet whatever your target is and make the cuts, knowing that when you look at the cuts, you're gonna say, well, we're not willing to do that. And I, I'm comfortable making the cuts, and I think it's a lot easier for me to make the cuts that, to, to, to meet your target, and then for you guys to say, we'd like to put this back in, this back in, this back in. But I just need it, I need some guidance from you, and I'm not asking for that at this meeting.
I, I feel comfortable giving that guidance to, to, to you guys.
I feel comfortable.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we've gotta give him some indication so that we don't kinda end up in March and presenting something that we're totally out of, we didn't wanna see that. You know, it's general broad guidance.
But w- well, that'll be an agenda item in, in December.
Mm-hmm. Okay, let's go to the real reports here. Is the cemetery committee gonna be ready to present it December?
My guess would be probably not. We're gonna, I mean, there, we're gonna have a meeting soon, I think, because you met with the, uh,
We did, and now we have to have one meeting to get some information this week.
Okay.
Okay, we'll hold that until January.
I think it's probably better to push that, that presentation to the select board till January because of the election and stuff like that.
Okay. Now, the pathways committee is scheduled to pre, uh, present. This is what their goals are for next year, for us.
Next month?
Yeah, December fifth.
Cool.
Okay. A little quick brief on midco solid waste. The budget meeting, the, a budget workshop is this Wednesday, six o'clock over at the Camden Town Office. The actual meeting where they will be approving the FY eighteen budget is December fourteenth, also a Wednesday and at five PM. They have formed a citizens committee, or citizens committee has been formed, the initial part, I think was, you know, the initial meeting they had was a couple of weeks ago. And we're hoping to be able to use that to increase knowledge of waste and recycling and other opportunities to reduce the waste stream and getting people involved. And that's really about all I have to say.
Do you poke your head down in the gut?
I was over there before they did the pour, I looked at it, they're making great progress.
They've made, I thought, really good, quick-ish progress.
Well, they poured Friday.
I didn't see that yet.
They, was it thirty-five or forty? Truckloads of concrete was put down in there.
Hot damn.
Yep, and they're finishing the process up, uh, today, as far as I think they were doing some corrings and things. But that has been, they were down to the point of refusal. They had had the suggestion from somebody that the water that was down in that hole that they had dug, that they'd just pump it out and pump it over into the North Quarry. And Jim said, I don't think so, that's really probably gonna be pretty mucky, and it was, it was a black sludge. So they pumped it up on top of the active landfill and are using the landfill to filter the, that sludge. So, um, that, they didn't find any surprises down there. They got a couple of those steel plates that didn't go all the way to the bottom, but they, I think they got them further down than they were at the last point, but they did a lot of work real fast.
I was impressed.
They hope to have it all closed up before it starts snowing. So, um, but they're having fun. Now, they, they were talking about holding their meetings here starting next year. Uh, that's why they had gone to the suggestion of the third Wednesday. And, you know, as I said earl, as I mentioned in an email to you, if it stays on Wednes, that third Wednesday, I'm not gonna be able to continue, because I've got other obligation that night. But if it gets moved to another night, they still wanna be here, and Jim Guerra is putting in the budget, the rental and the technician costs and things like that, so. You know, the idea is to get more public awareness of what's going on over there as we get closer and closer to, uh, the switch from Park to EcoMaine.
I don't know if you all picked up on this, one of the bigger differences coming down is that I, we're not gonna meet quarterly. We're gonna start meeting monthly.
Yep.
Because we used to just meet, they would meet once quarter, and it was kind of a BS meeting and just move on from there.
Several years ago, before we went to the quarterly meeting, we were meeting monthly, and we were getting so far down into the minutia that it was actually hampering progress.
Okay.
So, uh, so we reactivated the executive committee, the four town managers, plus the, the chair and the, um, facility manager. And to deal with that day-to-day operation, and then leave the board to be a real board and, and deal with the policy and, and future directions and things like that, so. That's my, that's all I have to report.
You guys heard from all of mine. Harbor Committee you just heard from, Conservation Commission, I think you're up to speed on, and Ad Hoc Library Planning has not met for several weeks.
ORC kicked off the season last week. Talking about the downtown district and the possible hotel use, also looking at the possibility of breaking that downtown district into two districts with a working waterfront district, which would basically cover Rockport Marine all the way around, Boat Club and that area.
That would get an entirely new district regulation.
Yep, uh, would be very similar to the nine thirteen, which it's part of now, except that right now we have some exceptions in there for marine use height of buildings and things like that. So it's the idea of it, the purpose of it would be to preserve the working waterfront. And, and we're looking at the hotel question as well, and have, the work plan is underway, so we're underway. Weekly meetings till March or whatever. Ambulance Review will meet this Thursday at six thirty, is that here or is it?
It's here, in this room.
And Legacy Rockport has been inactive, I've gotta kick somebody's butt on that one.
I sent out an email after, you mentioned it before, I didn't get a response to, to it.
Well, I'll talk to Richard about that. And Cemetery, we just talked about, which will meet soon, but there has been some progress made on some of the issues since the last time we met.
Can I jump back in with a question about, um, Harbor Committee? I didn't really feel like we got, like, a totally clear answer on how priorities are set by the harbor master in comparison to, to the Harbor Committee? Do, do you guys have any, can, can you educate me, provide historical context there?
The only thing, and they would be able to give you better.
There's no conflict, I'm just wondering whether or not.
The only thing that it made me think of when he was talking about that was, so what the Rec Committee's gonna be doing at some point is writing up what they believe their charge should be. Now, we eventually have to approve that or not, and because they simply provide recommendations, I said, you all sketch out what you think you should be in control of, what should be things that you're providing recommendations on, and then bring it to the select board and we, we'll prove it or not, and then you'll have a great direction on where you think you should go. I don't know if that would be a helpful thing for the Harbor Committee to try to redo, pull up what they currently have as far as their charge, and then sit down and have them organically figure out, what is it that we wanna do? And then it can come here or get booted to, and Abby gives it a, a once-over, the Parks Committee people give it the once-over, because you're talking about conflicts there, and seeing if they can come up with their own thoughts.
I think when, uh, and Jeff isn't here, but I think Je, Jeff redid those bylaws, if I'm remembering.
Harbor Committee.
Harbor Committee, yeah, I think they were redone recently. But I think, I mean, the basic thing to remember about these committees is, with a couple of exceptions, but not the Harbor Committee, Harbor Committee is an advisory committee to the select board.
Yeah.
They're supposed to advise us on issues having to do with the harbor. Obviously, Abby working down there is, is gonna be of great, a great source of information for the Harbor Committee. The Harbor Committee can't direct her what to do.
Right.
They can get her input and then they can ruminate about policy and come back to us and say, we recommend this, we recommend that, or whatever, so. I think if you think of it as, if they think of themselves as an advisory committee to the select board, that I would think would help guide them along with what they do.
I think the area that just feels a little gray to me is, is as I look forward into the capital improvement plan process, when, when I, because I was helping them to, to actually draw out a, a drawing of what, um, you know, sort of goals and aspirations are for a multi-year period. Just not, I wasn't totally clear on what Abby's role, Mike's role, and the Harbor Committee's role is in that process. I presume the best-case scenario would be everybody's on participating in that.
Well, I think, to a certain extent, the Harbor Committee is, is our citizen experts, if you will, in the harbor, and they're gonna look at things as, as citizens of the town and say, wouldn't it be nice to have more dingy space, or wouldn't it be nice to have a, a different boulder, whatever it is, whatever capital things are, are needed there? Now, Abby has a different perspective, you know, she's, she's an employee, she's a staff member, and she can say, I'd like something different, and the Harbor Committee can say, well, you know, that'd be nice, but it doesn't fit with the, the goals of the town, or would be too expensive for the taxpayer, or whatever, so. So it's a little bit of a different role, and like you say, I mean, for the most part, these committees work, I think, fairly well with the staff and the committees.
Yeah, and I, I think this one does as well.
Yeah, and I, I, yeah, I, I have no reason not to think that.
You're just at a funny spot to, like, take pathways, there's not a ton of people clamoring to try to state claim to the sidewalk. Whereas with the harbor, harbor masters down there, Public Works is down there, Parks Committee has a park there, Harbor Committee, you know, there's a lot of different intersections of groups in that same area, so it just becomes a little.
I mean, town manager with the, with the wedding policy, right, I mean, there, there's.
It's a lot going on down there.
Mm-hmm.
And I, you know, the Harbor Commission, feel free to weigh in on any of that stuff.
Yeah.
You know, the, the wedding policy, the.
And, and keep in, keep in mind that, you know, the Harbor Committee is recently, you know.
Oh, no, it's robust now.
It's really now, now we have a Harbor Committee that can actually, that, that they have a forum.
But my job is to provide some guidance, I think, you know, when I'm there, so I wanna, I wanna be able to.
I mean, and sometimes what I'll do in, in the roles of liaison is just say, well, this, this is what the select board is gonna wanna hear.
Yeah.
And so here's, and I've done that with pathways, and, and, you know, and no one has too, I'm sure, I mean, we were on the pathways committee when I would say that, I'd say, here's, here's what they're gonna wanna hear at this meeting, they're gonna wanna know, what are your budget priorities and, and what are your, you know, what's your goal?
What we wanna hear from them next month.
Exactly, so.
Okay?
I'm good.
Uh, Recreation, I think, did me a solid and just didn't tell me that they met the week before election. Thank you, Recreation Committee. Rick, did you go to that meeting?
I did, yes.
Do you wanna do a little after action on that?
Yeah, it was, uh, it was a really good meeting. One of the things was that we're, the committee was saying, the idea of having a, a clearer line of communication, um, and which we're working on that. Mike is, uh, stepping up more and more to, to filling in that com, communication piece.
Awesome.
And taking over more of that responsibility, so like, you don't, you're not stuck locking and unlocking that gate.
This is Mike Young.
Yes, yep. And also working on the budget, getting the budget numbers in earlier, so Suz, Suzanne is, is very aware of that now. Of, of, um, getting the budget numbers in, so we can start looking at the budget and coming up with a longer-term plan of, of the budget, we, you know, knowing we can't fix everything in the first year, but we've made a major step in that. And again, that's a, a committee that's just recently got re-energized, and I think, I think we're gonna have, see a lot of good things come out of it.
Yep.
And the people, that, you know, the people that showed up were really eager to get things done, and, um, I, I think that, I think it's a really good committee.
Yeah. Um, and then solid waste, Bill talked about solid waste. I had kind of two things, you all, did you all get emails from Lou Sapienza? So Lou's a friend of mine, he reached out to me about. That's solid waste? No, I was shifting gears to completely separate thing, so.
Before you leave that, what was the final tally on the ballot?
All, all four towns passed it.
Yeah.
Yeah, very overwhelmingly.
Yeah.
And it doesn't help when the people that were fighting it in the beginning embraced it and told people publicly at a lot of different events, yeah, vote for it, it's the best we could do. You might as well vote for it, there's no point not to, so yeah, it, it passed pretty nicely. Lou's had concerns about the, um, lack of painting on the sides of roads, your left and right and your center line. He's brought it up to me a handful of times, this is South Street, Simonton Corner, Park Street. It's South Street in particular because of its windiness and sightlines. I, I did, I reached out to Public Works, both in Camden, simply because my father-in-law, Camden, Mike Young, Steve Beveridge, talked to all of them, got a really clear picture of what that would actually look like. In addition to the actual paint, you gotta engineer the whole thing to make sure you paint at the right spot, that your center line's at the right spot. Then you start to run that slippery slope of, if we do it to South Street, well, you know, what about Rockville, what about this, what about? He's got some legitimate concerns, and it's one of those things where there's no, yeah, if money was no object, then we would paint all of the roads and make them as safe as possible.
But that paint is expensive.
I responded to him, because I came in over the weekend and responded to him, uh, today, and, you know, it is a problem, because all those roads are becoming more and more heavily used, and.
Especially South Street from all the people that go to the hospital in the morning.
Yeah, oh, that, that road's really busy, and the, the challenge is that the more we upgrade and improve the road,
Faster they'll drive.
The faster they drive and the more people use it.
Although, on roads like that, if you paint lines on them, it makes them look narrower. They do, people do slow down.
So, but Mike and I spoke about that this morning, um, you know, and, and I, um, we'll, we're gonna, when we do our drive-around on Friday, we'll take another look out there to see what his specific complaints are. But he, he, he was pretty familiar with the, the stretch of road that he's talking about.
Another kind of citizens report, and I talked with Rick about this, was it Seabright? No, not Seabright, um.
Sea Light Lane.
Sea Light Lane. Sea Light Lane is one of those interesting ones to where the pitch of the road doesn't actually go to the, to the unreasonable until you actually get to the summer people's houses. Everyone that's year-round, from my, what was, what I was told anyway, all the year-rounders stop right before it gets to that wicked pitch. So just going out campaigning, knocking on doors, it was a concern of the folks that, look, we pay a lot of taxes in this town, and rightfully so, look at my view, but no one comes down and plows, I can't get this, I can't get that, um, so I ended up driving it and.
It's the same road that that woman spoke to?
No, so the interesting thing is, is Pine Bray, it's different, and I don't wanna waste too much time on this, but you go into Sea Light going downhill. So if there was an emergency at the end of the road, you could basically get down there. Pine Bray, you go uphill to get anywhere. There's also more, from my perception anyway, more physical space if they wanted to re, uh, orient or engineer Sea Light. With Pine Bray, there's so many more houses there, that there's zigs and zags, to get within the pitch is just not quite reasonable. So, it's interesting, and, um, I've been working with.
You were out there because you had a complaint, or you were out there campaigning, or?
I just go everywhere. And then, uh, I've continued to work a bit on the Patterson Mobile Park, and trying to walk a fine line there of finding out about some of the pretty substantial health and safety concerns, while trying to not run the risk of, in certain senses, basically evicting people because of it, and we as the town not knowing what to do with them. But, um, we had a very interesting, uh, good meeting with the Knox County Homeless Shelter the other day. We have some potential ideas that we could work on, but it's one of those, it's a really crappy situation all the way around. And if you get a chance to cruise down and through there, it's our town. What I'm talking about is in our town, people are living in, in pretty poor conditions, and they're paying folks money to live there, so it's, it sucks. Uh, other than that?
I do have two other things, one of which is marijuana passed.
Yeah, it did, buddy.
And the governor has, what, ten days from the date of the election to declare the final count.
Yes, I, I did, I did hear from Phil Sossier, there, basically, we have a year, because there's gonna be another night, there's a nine-month time period for them to, to act and create rules and all that, so we basically have a year.
But that's on the retail sales.
Yes, that's on. Yes, that's on the.
Yep. One of the things I was putting on the agenda next month was to ask about placing a moratorium on pretty much the blanket thing, because retail sales does not include growing.
Right.
We still have a lot of information to gather.
We have a lot to gather, and it'd be best if we, we can put in an emergency hundred-and-eighty-day moratorium. You know, and that'll push it off until June. Where we want to go from there, we'll have to decide. So, the other thing I wanted to ask, you went to the Parks Committee meeting, I was out of town, remember? Ran out of town real quick.
Very briefly, I didn't go to the whole Parks Committee meeting, I just went with, with, relative to the, the discussion on Ma- Marine Park.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, and there, well, one member of the Parks Committee was very concerned about Andre and the, and the, the plantings around Andre. All members of the Parks Committee were not that concerned, they think that there's a solution there, so.
What's wrong with the plants?
That, that, the, the, um.
Fox on the Run.
Fox on the Run, and then when we put tents up there, the tents trampled some of the plants. But it, it wasn't, it wasn't a uniform decision that, that we just have to ban all kinds of uses down there.
Well, you're still working on the policy modifications down there.
Frankly, I haven't had a chance to start it yet, but, you know.
No, that means you're still working on it.
Yeah, that means I'm still working on it.
Yep. But for now, we have a halt on rentals down there during next summer.
We do.
We're just having a moratorium on fun in town, aren't we?
We're, we're gonna have fun, gonna have fun at holiday, gonna have fireworks. I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
I'm so in favor of that.